Okay, thank you very much for joining us for the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, August 4th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you very much for joining us. We have quite an event today with your participation, so let's work through this together. We are receiving many emails and we have requests to speak in the room on topics today for items that are not on the agenda. So, this is citizen input is the moment we are on our agenda right now. And then also, this is a three-minute testimony opportunity to the Board of Commissioners. I want to thank you for this input. And we may or may not be responding directly to any specific topic today, but we will absolutely bring this under advisement. And Commissioners can speak on the topics, too. Just letting you know, we may or may not get engaged as this is happening. So, I'm going to acknowledge many emails received by us for citizen input. These are emails to us in our inboxes regarding China Hat and homelessness issue, and I think we're going to hear, you know, verbal comments on that also. Also, citizen input regarding masks and the discussions happening at the state, federal level and the guidance for our local public health. And we are going to have a COVID-19 update today also, so we'll be talking about what we know, the current status of this. And then also, water levels at WikiUp Reservoir. So, these are emails that are provided to us. I'm not going to go through the name from each one, but we do have these on the record, and they will be part of our meeting record. So, at this time, we're going to step through all these requests, each one, as I say, there's a three-minute timer here for this, but... So, we have... So, maybe just audio in the room if somebody can...
Back up.
Okay, is it going up now? Okay, yeah, so maybe it went up and down. So, Debbie Lee and then also Tyler Smith. We do have two microphones available, so we can alternate back and forth today. Thank you very much for joining us.
Good morning. I live in Sundance, at the back of Sundance, where 25 years ago, 19 homes burnt down. I'm up against the Deschutes National Forest, and there was an incident where a homeless person first went to my neighbor's house and was drinking water from his outdoor faucet. He apparently knew where the faucet was because he went right to it. And as my husband was putting out the trash cans at 10:00 at night on a Thursday night, this homeless man approached him and said he was so thirsty. My husband says, "Well, wait here, I'll go get you a bottle of water." And he went in and got my son and some power bars and water and took them back to the man. He was interested in knowing the way back to Bend, so we directed him down the hill. But this is very disturbing to find this at 10:00 at night, right on your neighborhood. So, this is something that needs to be addressed, and I hope that we'll be able to find some solutions to this. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Debbie.
So, Tyler Smith, and then if...
Your phone has ran out. It's hard to make your call.
I'll put it on the bottom of the list, and it'll come back around. So, Morgan Smith, and then Jonah Polish.
My name is Morgan Smith, and we recently moved to Bend from the Seattle area, and we're building a home in Sunset View Estates off of China Hat Road. And when we first decided to move to Bend, we were really drawn by the natural beauty and, like so many in this community. And we were also struck by the friendliness and the helpfulness of everyone that we met in Bend. And we felt that Bend would be the perfect place for us to raise our family and set down our roots, and here we are, a year later. When we bought our property, we felt comforted by the fact that we were buying into a fire-wise community. We knew that fire is an issue in central Oregon, and we wanted to be smart about it. And we have dedicated the design and the building of our home with that in mind. Every decision is made to be fire-wise. But there's only so much that we can do, and it's really disheartening to see the community of unhoused people behind China Hat and see the unsafe conditions. We've driven down there and seen open fires, gas cans, propane tanks, very unsafe, children running around, broken-down cars. It feels to us like it's only a matter of time. It's not if, it's just when something's going to happen back there. Having come from Seattle, we also know that of the difficulties dealing with a homeless population. We were right in the city of Seattle itself, and so encountered it on a daily basis. We know that there are lots of considerations that everyone has to make as far as making sure both housed and unhoused people are safe. However, we've also been talking with Patty, and we know that there are proposals and there are plans in place that can be done to address this, and it would just be a folly to not take advantage of those proposals and use this as an opportunity to make sure that everybody in the community is safe. We so appreciate the willingness of the elected officials to talk, take phone calls. It's very different from what we got in Seattle where there is no plan and no one really responds to these issues. So, we are really encouraged by the actions and the plans and proposals that seem to be in place. But I understand that you also are up against some federal issues where there may not be responsive people, but we just want to thank you and encourage you to continue the fight, and hopefully something can get done for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan.
Jonah Polish, and then Ray Miao after this. Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
No, I think the sound needs to improve. I'm hearing that it's not...
Yes, can you hear me right now?
I don't... Is it working?
Bring it a little closer.
Down a little bit.
And those pick up pretty well, so we can hear how loud it is now, so...
Okay. So, my name is Jonah Polish, and I live in southeast Bend off China Hat Road. Last year, a small group of neighbors formed CHAT, China Hat Action Team, as we saw a need for a collective effort to address the lawlessness that has taken over the beautiful forest that surrounds our homes. This came about after we had each individually emailed and called the Forest Service about the increase in illegal activity off China Hat with little response from the Forest Service. Presently, we are only getting excuses from them as to why they can't enforce the law, ranging from COVID to lack of resources to not having a solution they want to implement. Campers were supposed to move more than 25 miles after their two-week stay on federal forest land. Why are campers allowed to break the law and live on federal land for months and years without any consequence and destroy the forest that we should all be able to enjoy and recreate in? Giant garbage piles, abandoned cars and RVs, human waste, poaching, drugs, and most concerning, human-caused fires are increasing month after month while the problem is being ignored. We were able to get the dispatch records for last year, and in only 10 months, there were 350 incidents where law enforcement was dispatched to China Hat Forest Road 18. Think about the amount of resources that are being used for so few people simply because malfeasance abounds without consequences. Something has to be done before it's too late. I reached out to Commissioner Adair in January, and I want to say thank you very much for being so responsive to our phone calls, our emails, and meeting requests. She has been instrumental in creating connections to Congressman Cliff Bent's office staff and helped schedule meetings with our CHAT team, the Forest Service, and Sheriff Nelson. She has been a fierce advocate for us, wanting to find a solution to this complicated issue. I appreciate her time and effort and hope after today's meeting, the other Commissioners, as well as the Forest Service, will join together to solve this very serious problem that is impacting thousands of people and putting us in harm's way. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jonah.
After Ray Miao is going to be Carolyn Marks.
Good morning, and thank you for having this public hearing. Chair DeBonne, Commissioner Adair, Commissioner Chang. On behalf of... Well, let me first say, my wife said I should keep this very brief, so I will cut it short. I'm a member of the Rural Fire Protection District Number Two, but today I'm speaking to you on behalf of, as the President of the Woodside Ranch Homeowners Association. We want to thank you, and thank you very, very much for all the support that you've given us in making defensible space through your grants over these... It seems like a lifetime. They've really helped us to create Woodside Ranch to be much safer from wildfire. Without your assistance and financial aid, we wouldn't be able to do this year after year. So, thank you very, very much. The problem with wildfire is, we can't do this alone, and we know you can't do it either. This requires all hands, all lands, as they say on the cohesive strategy. We need to work together with Forest Service, homeowners, the county, the city, everyone in order to protect ourselves from wildfire, because we are the wildland. Everyone on the edge of Bend lives in the forest, and we do that on purpose because we like it there. We may be dumb, but we do that, and it will continue to grow. So, I'm urging you to continue with your support for all the wildfire activities, continuing to support Project Wildfire, and educating homeowners on what they can do, because ultimately, it's their responsibility to protect their own property. We don't have enough resources to take care of a wildfire. China Hat presents an incredibly new situation for us, where human-caused fire less than 100 yards from our subdivision, under the right conditions, will wipe out the subdivision. So, whatever you can do, we appreciate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
So, Carolyn Marks, and then following is going to be Clark Gorel.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Marks. My family moved to the very southern end of Woodside Ranch in 1987. The Deschutes National Forest is our immediate neighbor to the south. On June 19th of this year, as part of the Central Oregon Land Cruiser's China Hat cleanup effort, I led a group of volunteers to an abandoned campsite one-half mile from our homes in Woodside. I chose to tackle this site due to its proximity to our houses and its inherent flammability. The presence of old mattresses, upholstered furniture, cardboard boxes, and heaps and heaps of plastic waste and other refuse held the potential to provide the ladder that might carry flames from a ground fire into the forest canopy. What I didn't realize this site also held were literally hundreds and hundreds of used hypodermic needles. Also present were spent bullet casings. In 2006, due to the efforts of concerned Woodside Ranch residents, the Deschutes National Forest imposed a forest order banning the discharge of firearms from its border with private property on China Hat Road out to the power line road. Recreational shooting in this area had grown to a level where it was posing a significant threat to public safety. The majority of the homeless transient camps off China Hat Road lie within this no-shooting zone. My neighbors and I routinely hear firearms being discharged from within these camps. This is illegal, this is a public safety threat. Depending on the type of firearm, a single bullet can travel one to two miles. Not even one-half mile from the abandoned camp with the needles and the bullet casings was an abandoned and dilapidated RV that a young boy and his family had lived in for over a year. I encountered this child in the forest one day, wandering away from his motorhome, looking for his dogs. Also nearby is a trail that is frequented by bicyclists and joggers. And then there are our homes one-half mile away. Many of my Woodside neighbors can't even claim they have a one-half-mile buffer between themselves and a potentially fatal mix of drug and alcohol abuse and firearm use. The situation on the Deschutes National Forest off China Hat Road in Bend is dire. The forest dwellers themselves are in danger, neighboring property owners are in danger, the recreating public is in danger, and our brave public servants who respond to our 911 calls day and night are in danger. Don't let it take the loss of life to act. And I will leave you with an email from Woodside Ranch homeowner Sharon Lady, who sent this to our HOA board last night. She writes, "I wanted you to know that I just found a homeless man along the road in front of Mountain High Golf Course with his bike and stuff. He had a gun, a pump rifle, and he was cranking it. I called the police, and there were five cars on the situation. He certainly lives out on China Hat, I have seen him before." Thank you.
Thank you very much for your...
Thanks, Carolyn.
So, Clark, Clark Gorel, and then Wendy will be following.
Good morning. My name is Clark Gorel. I am currently the President of Sunset View Estates Homeowners Association off China Hat. As a community, we are very concerned about the dangers of wildfire. The Swamp Wells Trail Fire was a warning that a fire moving down China Hat, under the right conditions, will be devastating to our community. Complicating the matter, our water company does not provide backup power to water pumps for our community. When we lose power, which is typical during a wildfire, we lose all water pressure to fire hydrants and sprinkler systems. While our community has a means to be notified and the capability to evacuate, the homeless community living on China Hat does not and lacks reliable transportation to evacuate. A fire on China Hat will be deadly, whether started by lightning or by the homeless camp. Given this unprecedented drought and fire danger, we, as a community, are asking for a no camping zone on China Hat to prevent a deadly tragedy from happening. We, as a community, are also very concerned about illegal camping, forest pollution from trash and human waste, crime, drug abuse, and allowing people to live in abject poverty. Can we, as a society, should be making it difficult for people to live in abject poverty? We should be providing services for those that are willing to accept it, and for those who are not, there needs to be consequences. However, today, our biggest concern as an HOA is fire damage. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Clark.
So, Wendy Gorel, please hold the applause to the end. Let's not do any... These are all public testimony on hot topics, and thank you. Cheryl, thank you so much. And then, I'm sorry, Cheryl Briganti is going to be after you. Sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for letting us speak today. It will become very evident in my short statement that I'm an accountant, so bear that in mind. The current situation on China Hat is costing everyone and benefiting no one. It is costing the natural habitat. It is costing the Bend community because people don't want to hike or bike in that area anymore. It is costing valuable law enforcement time. It is costing homeowners by increasing property threats through fire and theft, and it is costing the homeless through dangerous living conditions. We know there will be costs to fix this issue, so if there are costs regardless, wouldn't it be better to benefit everyone than to benefit no one? I urge you to please address the situation now, for everyone's sake.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Briganti. I live in Sunset View Estates on the Lost Tracks Golf Course. I live at the southwest end of our subdivision that sits a few hundred feet from Forest Road 1801 going down towards the High Desert Museum. In the past few years, the atmosphere has changed along that forest road. What used to be used for recreation is now a popular site for the homeless. The homeless have used this area to live. Originally, the folks out there were people who had jobs and just needed a place to stay. Their campsites were clean, and they were all polite. Things have changed. Now, the campsites are quite large and have become very disruptive. I can hear screaming and fighting from my house. The sites are filled with garbage and broken-down vehicles. Here are some of my experiences living this close to the BLM land. We put out a fire that was started by a passing vehicle. We had a homeless man sleeping on our back deck. He was clearly out of his mind on drugs. I called the sheriff's office about an abandoned vehicle off the forest road. An officer came out and met me. While the officer was there, I asked them to visit this very large campsite that I could see from my back deck. This was one of the loudest campsites. I was told by the deputy that they were not allowed to visit the homeless camp without backup since it's too dangerous. It's too dangerous for an armed officer, but it's okay for them to set up a few hundred feet from my house? On March 23rd this year, we had another homeless man on our front porch sleeping. He was subsequently arrested on an outstanding drug felony. This Friday, July 30th, while sitting on the back deck, we heard a lot of sirens. Out on the BLM land, I could see many police cars out there with their lights on. I called the next morning to find out what had happened and told it was a traffic stop where the vehicle took off and went down Forest Road 1801. The car broke down, and the person took off running. They never found this individual. I have called the Forest Service to ask for their help and told that they were too understaffed to do anything. Since we don't have the manpower to deal with this issue out here, my suggestion is to put up a gate at the entrance of this road off China Hat. That way, people who want to recreate still can, but it will alleviate the dangerous behavior that has now become all too common. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
So, Stella Larson and Helen Weber after this.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Stella Larson, and I live at 60241 Tall Pine Avenue. I am directly across from the road. We didn't buy... We bought because of the beautiful forest, of course, and also the proximity to the golf course where my husband could walk over and play. That was kind of cool. It happened about twice. He's not a good golfer. Anyway, I thank you today very much for taking up this issue, at least to really investigate it. And I'd like to preface my comments by thanking law enforcement and first responders for their taking of these over 300 calls. I know it's over 300 calls because every call goes past my living room and master bedroom windows, sometimes with lights flashing, and I am about 200 feet from the road. I called one time... Oh, I've called many times, but I'm famous there probably. But I called one time because of shots fired, and I said to the dispatcher, "I'm getting PTSD. I really am. This is incredible. I'm like living in the center of my rooms, and when I hear shots fired, I get low." And I'm not accustomed to living like that, and I don't think on either side of the road anybody should be. But... So, they stopped using their sirens, which was also very thoughtful. But I know these go by because of the lights and the whole thing. Anyway, the people who take these calls, the Bend police, our sheriffs, the Oregon State Police, fire, paramedics, all of them, put themselves at risk in a community that should not have them in this position. In the span of a year, this is a staggering volume. I can vouch for it. I can vouch for everything about it. I used to pick up trash along China Hat, and it was imperative to me to be safe, but no more. I can't do it. Bicyclists and recreational users have vanished. Folks live in defensive mode on both sides of the road. Security is expensive and comes with no guarantee. Locking mailbox, yeah. I have only two words to convey the feelings of fear and angst about the situation. Baby Bradley, the baby that crawled away and was found before a controlled burn by search and rescue off of China Hat. We were so lucky that day. It could have been exactly what we all don't want, the death of a child by fire in the forest because people were loaded with guns, with drugs, you name it. I wish to thank the public forum, the first responders, dispatchers, of course, who take these calls, my calls to report domestic violence, shots fired, fires, theft of my property, trespass, people beating on my door at 4:00 AM, you name it. It's happening out there. This is an urgent matter of public health and safety, and public health and safety is the first obligation of government. Thank you.
Thank you, Stella.
Thank you, Stella.
So, Helen is next, and then Mike Reagan.
Good morning. I'm Helen Weber. Since my husband and I moved to Woodside Ranch, to our dream home that we built 31 years ago this month, we had expected to see some growth and changes around us, but certainly not what we are seeing now. Our primary concern is the safety of people on both sides of China Hat Road. Our hearts go out to the homeless, and the ones who want to help themselves and get out of that situation, we are all for supporting and for getting help in law enforcement of the laws being broken by the others. We're grateful to law enforcement, as Stella mentioned and others have mentioned. We're so grateful. We're very aware when they come by. We can see the lights flashing. We're in the third row of houses from the homeless camps, and we hear the generators running at 10:00 or 11:00 at night. We hear the screaming and the arguing even. Stella and I, when we go for walks during the day, we have called in reports of shooting. I'm an experienced shooter of many decades. I know gunshots. I know when I hear large caliber guns being fired within a couple of hundred yards of where I am, and safety is just a huge concern for us. We stood there and watched five days after the camp fire destroyed Paradise, California. Five days after that, November 13th, Tuesday of 2018, we watched while the flames licked up from a homeless campfire into the trees right next to Sunset View Estates. We called in, multiple people called in on 911, and 45 minutes later, they began to fight the fire. Fortunately, the winds were not in the normal south, from the south and west that evening, and the fire didn't take off immediately. It was confined to the area. I think it was about an acre, but the campers had to be evacuated, of course, because that's human life. They have to be evacuated before firefighters can begin facing the enemy. Last week on Tuesday, I observed a trespasser, a large man, exiting the gate, closing the gate behind him, excuse me, and walking around the property of Stella, who just spoke to you. She was not home, fortunately. I called right away to see if she was there. This kind of thing is common. A few years ago, maybe four or five years ago, my husband and I were out in the forest there across the way, and we saw 12 deer carcasses piled up, all of them decapitated. We knew that things were really changing where we live.
Thank you for the testimony time. Yeah.
Thank you, Helen.
Next is Mike, and then Roy is just a first name on the next one also.
I'm Mike Reagan. I second everything that's been said here so far. I can see the tops of the trees sheltering the camps at the south end of the golf course from my back deck. I've had a big concern about fire. I've also had a wake-up call about a month ago when a car hit a transformer by the Schuets River Woods up near 97, and we lost power. We also lost water pressure. I spent a bunch of money buying three-quarter-inch contractor-grade hose, hundreds of feet of it, to have my own fire department. I was feeling kind of smug that I could maybe save the house, but when I lost water pressure, I realized that, like anybody else, if fire comes through, I'm going to have to grab what I can and run and lose everything potentially. So, I'm, day by day, whenever I smell smoke, I look out and try to figure out, do I need to start loading the car? Kind of a scary way to live. The camps out there, I've been through them pretty extensively. I've got a dirt bike. I ride with friends out there. I own an airplane, I fly over it. I put... I put together the montage of photos along the wall. I'm going to leave them for you. There's a plastic bag wadded up that it can all fit back in if you want to start for a presentation or to show somebody. And I'm going to leave you with a flash drive with all the raw material on it. That's really about all I have to say. What I did over there kind of speaks for itself and I'm just here to back up these other people's experience. They mirror my own and I can't tell you how much strongly I feel about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you Mike. Glenn Cosmasa is supposed to be coming to town. He's the Deputy Regional Forester for Oregon and Washington and definitely he'll see those photos. I've been forwarding emails to him with pictures attached, so I thank you for those, just so he knows, you know, what you're saying today.
So we have Roy, just a first name on a request to speak and then following that is Tyler Smith.
Well, this is, is it okay to speak now?
Yes, please. And you're Roy?
I just support everything that everybody has said, which is very true. It's an out of control situation out there.
Could you provide your name for the record?
Oh, Roy. Roy West. I live at the end of Campy, backs up to BLM. And if you go out there, there's people living in trucks, camping, uncontrolled fires. It's a mess. Dogs running around, people for the long term and the Forest Service has done nothing about this. You go into, over by Sisters, it seems like the Rangers over there have taken care of the problem somehow. I don't know why in our area they don't do anything. It can't be a staffing problem. It's some other issues. But my biggest concern about the whole thing is fire. If a fire breaks out there and goes out of control, it could affect a lot of area in Bend. And it's just an out of control situation that I think US Commissioners need to address. All these concerns of all these homeowners and that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Roy.
Tyler Smith and then David Mock.
My name is Tyler Smith and we are building a home in Sunset View Estates and we're new to the community, but it is absolutely mind blowing to hear everyone's stories. And so we've driven by China Hat camp and it's surprised us and, you know, such a beautiful area and to see so many crazy, it's crazy to see open fires. This was in April, we saw open fires and kids running loose and dogs. And like everyone else, I think my main concern is fire and to me, it's kind of a simple diagnosis. It's not a matter of if there's going to be a fire, it's a matter of when and how bad.
Absolutely.
And so I appreciate all you elected officials and what you've done and what you can do because to me, this is a preventable situation. So, thank you.
Thank you Tyler.
And then David Mock is the last request to speak at this time. Okay, good, one on Zoom also.
Good morning. I live in Sunset Estates. I grew up in Oakland, California. Lived there all my life. Went to school in Berkeley, went to college in Berkeley. And I've seen firsthand what happens when you don't address this problem. I don't know if you, people have ever had the chance to be in the Bay Area or be in San Francisco, but throwing money at it doesn't always solve it because San Francisco throws a lot of money at the homeless. It's the elected officials that have to come up with some ingenuity and some creativity to address the problem. Now, I know that these people don't want to be homeless. Well, not all of them, some of them do. You got a metal problem, you got a drug problem, and then you got some people that just want to be free and do what they want to do. I just like to stress what happens when it isn't addressed and I've seen it firsthand. Like I said, you know, it started out in the early eighties, it got pretty prevalent in the nineties and I loved Oakland. And you go through some of those streets and some of those places, I had a business in Oakland and it's very sad. So it's, it's not an easy job. I'm not saying that it's, you know, hit its light switch, it's going to solve it, but it needs to be addressed and it needs to be addressed seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you David.
So at this time on Zoom, we may have a participant for public testimony items that are not on the agenda. Great. So notice this was the raised hand feature, so thank you very much for figuring out that technology. So Ray Lackey. Mr. Lackey, please join us. You might have been transferred from an observation to participant in our Zoom meeting.
Yeah, he's still on mute.
We're so close. Mr. Lackey, are you available? Well, at this time, we'll take that as a no and move on. So as I say, we are available, phone call, email, direct communication. I do apologize if we're missing you today. Is there anybody else in Zoom? So Megan Woodruff.
Hi, my name is, is it okay to go ahead?
Yes, please do.
This is Megan Woodruff. Okay, great. Thank you so much. My name is Megan Woodruff. I'm actually dialing in today from Sisters. We have started a little group here that is similar to chat, to China Hat Action Team. I've been working with Caroline. We have some similar issues as the China Hat Road area. I think one speaker before me mentioned that Sisters isn't as bad. That may be the case. We're a teeny little town up here, but we still are facing many, many, many of the same issues. We have lots of camps. We have uncontrolled fires, there's drugs, there's, you know, violence, et cetera. You know, all the same issues, just slightly smaller scale, but we are trying to get out ahead of it. So I'm here to lend my support to the China Hat Action Team and to share, you know, some of my experiences. I live in the Clear Pine neighborhood, which borders the Schuets National Forest. I'm very concerned about illegal camping in the forest, especially the camping that happens directly adjacent to my community and my home. There was a camper fire earlier this year in the forest, less than a quarter of a mile from my house. It was started by someone who was camping illegally in the forest. Illegal camping creates not only fire hazards, but it threatens the health and welfare of the environment and the forest and all who create in it. The trash from abandoned camps, the human waste, the toxic waste such as used needles and medical supplies are an attack on our treasured national resource. The forest belongs to everyone, everyone, and we are all stewards of this natural resource. I implore our county commissioners to work with the Forest Service to create buffer zones around local neighborhoods like Clear Pine and the China Hat Road area and highly trafficked traffic trails to ensure that public access and enjoyment of the forest is not infringed upon by those who have no respect for public lands and that the safety of our neighborhoods and our homes are not jeopardized. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thanks Megan.
Is there anybody else? Maybe one more? Dennis, thank you very much for joining us. Are you on mute? On mute audio? And introduce yourself for the record. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Dennis Krakow. I live at Woodside Ranch subdivision. Everything, everybody has said is my experience. I'm speaking on a related topic though. My wife and I have had to call 911 either emergency or non-emergency many times over the last 20 years. We've actually lived there over 30 years. Due to criminal behavior on China Hat Road, Forest Road 18. Here comes the serious part now. There's been a consistent lack of coordination between 911 dispatch, the sheriff's office, and the Forest Service law enforcement officers. The dispatchers don't know the area. They apparently don't have resources. In a minimum, they should have the Forest Service Motor Vehicle Use Map Number Four. The deputies need to be better trained about the US Forest Service rules, including the rules about living in the forest, motor vehicle operation, and firearm restrictions. I know a lot about these because I've had to deal with these topics and what I would like the commissioners to do is help me meet with representatives of the 911 district, the sheriff's office, and the Forest Service to, if I can meet with them, I can tell them firsthand the problems and then maybe we can get some better response to these calls. It's very frustrating when the dispatcher has no clue, the deputy doesn't even know that within our Woodside Ranch subdivision, there's no firearm shooting allowed. They don't know that there's no firearm shooting allowed in the forest near the subdivision. So that's it. I just would like someone from the county to contact me. I am, I can give you my address, 60033 Ridge Court. I'll even put my phone into the record. I'll put my email in the record. It's Krakow CPA Charles Paul Adam at gmail dot com.
Thank you very much for the testimony.
Thank you Dennis.
Is there anybody else on Zoom? Is that a hand up? One more? Yeah, Peter, you're right between me and trying to see the video person. Nope. Another opportunity for Ray Lackey to join us. The raised hand feature almost got us there. Okay, yeah, seeing no response. Let's move on. Is there any phone numbers on Zoom? Okay, seeing no phone numbers. So this has been our request to speak and items not on the agenda. I'm interested in responding to this, this whole concept a little bit. Any thoughts if you were?
Yeah, I just wanted to assure the residents of the China Hat Road area that the full Board of Commissioners is aware of the situation and is concerned about both your safety and your community feeling as well as the welfare of some of the people who are living out there. And we are doing everything we can to figure out how we can deploy funds or work within, work or tweak our land use planning system to allow us to get a managed camp set up or multiple managed camps set up throughout the county where, you know, there would be rules of conduct and organization and, you know, safety infrastructure and all sorts of other things so that people would have a place to camp if they're facing homelessness and not be a hazard to themselves or to others.
Commissioner Dare.
I just want to thank everyone for coming in today and hearing your testimony. It is so personally compelling. I knew it was a problem because some people had met with me originally when I ran a couple years ago and I have, you know, I had met with the Forest Service, I met with the Forest Service starting the first year I was in office and I'm so glad you came in today. I've been, I've driven through the camp with Officer Zook. He has each person at that point in time identified, you know, were they druggies? You could tell the working poor. You actually could tell them their places were kept so neat, but this family had a child. You know, I've been there and I feel so badly for you that your neighborhood is no longer safe and so we seriously have to do something, but we have to do it as, we have to do it as commissioners, but we need to do it with the work, you know, with the coordination and collaboration of the Forest Service actually, you know, following through. So thank you so much today. I really feel that your message has been heard by our community. It's a serious problem. When you look at what happened in Paradise, how that fire jumped three ridges and that town was taken out, depends on the wind, right? It depends where you are and no one should be living with that much anxiety over your own home. I mean, we've, we've got to help and we will. We will do our very best. So thank you for coming today.
So a couple of thoughts. This is August, we're talking about fire and fire danger, but we're, we also already need to set up for winter, so this is a long-term problem. We want to empower our public safety to be able to ask somebody to move after a long term, ask them not to be making a big mess out there and, you know, hold on to the culture of central Oregon. If people need help, let's help, but let's not be overrun by somebody at the perimeter of our city. We do have city police, county sheriffs, state police, and the federal public safety. And as Commissioner Dare just pointed out, they can make relationships at this time, but they're not empowered to ask somebody to move and we've got to get to that point. We can't be keep abusing this thing and turning these into large unmanaged camps. We need in central Oregon, just a little bit of attitude and gumption to defend our culture, to be able to move forward comfortably and not feel like we're on our heels here. So let's keep this in perspective for central Oregon. Thank you very much for the comments of what's happened in other places around the country. This is happening in other places, but what are we going to do about it and how are we going to be able to just be comfortable in our private property, paying taxes, understanding our sense of community, and helping those people in need? So I just want to thank you very much for joining us. Obviously, we're getting a great feedback at this time. This is the end of our public testimony right now. We are available, so there was a hand raised in the room. We are available for communication and we do have an agenda on other items today. So I want to thank you very much.
I just wanted to say one more thing. A lot of people expressed concern about the way that the Forest Service is responding to this situation. So, you know, concern about federal government response. And you've already tuned in that members of Congress can have substantial influence over the work that federal agencies do. Just a piece of advice I would offer is that the federal government does more when a whole congressional delegation is united and directing them in the same direction. So in addition to speaking with Representative Benson's office about this, I would encourage people to contact their two US senators. When you have all the members of Congress that represent a certain area, all saying the same thing to the Forest Service, they respond more strongly and quickly.
Okay, thank you so much for joining us. At this time, we're going to go to our consent agenda. We have a couple items and some minutes.
Second.
There we go. Any other discussion? Seeing nine Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair of Votes, yes. At this time.
Very valuable discussions.
At this time, we'll just take a moment for the room to clear and we'll get to item number six.
Yeah, can you leave him in, if he doesn't mind? Sure.
At this time, we'll go to item number six, consideration of board signature of an order whether to hear an appeal of hearings officer approval for an application of a replacement dwelling.
Good morning Commissioners. I thought, I thought I still had something in front of me for consent.
We powered right to the consent agenda.
Wow. Cynthia Schmidt for the record with the County Planning Division. We have before you an appeal of a hearings officer approval. The file number is 24721000628A. The applicant and property owner in this case is Robert and Karen Reed, pardon me. They are represented by Lisa Andrack with Fitch and Neary. They are represented by Lisa Andrack with Fitch and Neary. The appellant in this case is Ronald Ray and Rachel Ann Thompson. Subject property is 50745 Maston Road in Le Pine. It's about four and a half miles southwest of the city limits of Le Pine. The issue before you today is to decide if you want to hear this appeal of the hearings officer's approval. But before you make that decision, just a little background. The Reeds requested to replace an existing single-family dwelling. The house was first established in 1949. The replacement would be located south and east of the existing home. Access will be from Maston Road, which is adjacent to the north property boundary, and also an existing easement along the eastern boundary. Now, that eastern access easement is also used by the neighbors, Rachel and Ronald Thompson, who are the appellants in this case. So how this began is staff issued an administrative decision for replacement of a dwelling in the exclusive farm use zone in the wildlife zone. The Thompsons appealed this decision. And before the hearings officer, the applicant also applied for site plan review for landscape management review associated with the Little Deschutes River. That's adjacent to the western property boundary. So the hearings officer reviewed the appeal of staff's approval and also the site plan for landscape management review. The hearings officer affirmed staff's decision and also approved that site plan review. The neighbors, Ronald Ray and Rachel Ann Thompson, appealed this decision to the board. They had various assignments of error, including the hearings officer missed or ignored the main points of the appeal. They made, hearings officer made false statements. The process and hearing, staff's initial decision was, contained irregularities, procedural irregularities. And then they also believed that the hearings officer made improper findings regarding the access easement. So the action for you today is to decide whether or not to hear this appeal. You can decline to hear the, decline review of the appeal or you can accept review of the appeal. If you accept review, you have three options to how to hear that appeal, whether it be de novo, which is typical of the board where it's an open record, on the record, which is everything developed before the hearings officer, and limited de novo, which is on a specific aspect of the project. I did outline in my staff memo reasons to hear and reasons not to hear. I can go over those briefly if you'd like. Reasons to hear, you may want to take testimony and make interpretations related to the hearings officer's decision. You may want to reinforce or refute some or all of the hearings officer's findings or interpretations prior to an appeal before the Land Use Board of Appeals or Luba. If the board accepts review, staff believes a de novo hearing is not necessary, but rather review on the record. This is also the applicant's first choice if you decide to hear it. And I would also, staff would recommend time limits on testimony. If you decide not to hear, you, you know, reasons for not hearing is to accept the hearings officer's decision as sufficient and accurate and that the record is supported if appealed to Luba, Land Use Board of Appeals. The applicant also agrees with the hearings officer's decision and their first choice is that they request the board not hear this. Staff also recommends that you not hear the appeal. We believe the appellants were able to present all relevant evidence and testimony before the hearings officer. And the hearings officer made a good decision by analysis. So moreover, the hearings officer's decision does not present any policy issues. So that is the decision before you, whether or not to hear this appeal. You have any questions?
So, yeah, time for a decision here. So if we discuss any content of this, does that add to the record at all? That was one of the questions. Because, you know, just thoughts of why, why we wouldn't.
Well, the, this meeting and
This wouldn't add to
This meeting will be added to the record regardless.
So, because, yeah, so I'm in that spot about, you know, how to observe or digest the content or just thumbs up or thumbs down. So just acknowledging that as a policymaker. I would, I do not want to hear this, so, you know, making sure I'm clear on this. I do conclude that there's no county code implications. As in, this is a, an appealed matter, but there aren't, you know, there isn't like a whole layer of this in the county for this topic. It's a replacement dwelling with a, you know, proposed site plan. That's a contested matter. So, yeah, I don't know that I want to say anymore.
Right. Was the dwelling from what, 1949?
Yeah.
So, yes, I do believe that the recommendations of declining to hear this are, I agree with that.
I had the chance to read through the hearings officer's decision and I found it to be very thorough. And it did seem like the appellant had a lot of opportunity to present any relevant evidence that they wanted to present during those hearings. So I'm also not interested in hearing this appeal.
So then just also acknowledging, and, you know, the memo provides a URL to the website, which breaks out, so I've, we've had online documents for a long time. So this is the technology side of it. But breaks out the application, you know, the staff decision, appeal, hearings officer decision, just in the table format. Very nice way to be able to walk through this land use matter. So, yeah, hopefully that's valuable for all parties to be able to see the history of this and the decisions, be able to quickly get to a point, so.
Do we have to have an emotion then? Adam?
Yes, you have two orders in front of you. One of them, accepting the appeal and the alternative version, declining to appeal. I would recommend a motion approving order number 2021-035, the version that is declining the appeal.
Yeah, so it's the same number, it was just
Two different versions.
Version, okay.
Okay.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve board signature of order number 2021-035, approving application for a replacement dwelling and denying, or determining not to hear an appeal of the hearings officer approval of that application.
Second it.
Okay, any other discussion? So this is the denying the review by order number 2021-035. So call them for the vote, Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, I'm glad you got the memo today. Pocahontas. Did you get that memo?
Yeah.
I didn't get that. I got stripes. Item number seven, consideration of signature of intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health Authority.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Cheryl Smallman. I'm the Business Officer for Health Services. And I'm joined today with, by Greg Munn, Deschutes County Chief Financial Officer, as well as Nahad Sadr Azodie on Zoom, who is the Director of Public Health, should there be any specific questions related to this, the setup of the Vaccine Center. Today, we're here in front of you for consideration of Chair, or consideration of Chair signature of document number 2021-640. This is an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority that provides federal emergency management agency, or FEMA, public assistance funds to the county under this agreement for the purpose of responding to the state of emergency due to coronavirus or COVID-19. The funds provided under this grant agreement support the establishment and maintenance of vaccination implementation activities, including expenses that were incurred during fiscal year 2021 for the establishment of the Mass Vaccination Center at the Deschutes County Fair and Expo site, as well as additional potential vaccine distribution events, such as the booth at the county fair last week, Redmond Airport, and others that we may be exploring in fiscal year 2022. This is, this agreement extends from December 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2021, so the end of this calendar year. And it's not to exceed $2.4 million. In fiscal year 2021, we incurred about $2 million, leaving about $400,000 for fiscal year 2022. At this point, we do not believe that a budget adjustment is needed for additional appropriation. Should we expend the full amount of $2.4 million, we may need additional appropriation for this current fiscal year, but we ask to come back at that time, should it be needed in Health Services or Fund 274 if the projections indicate so.
Could these dollars be utilized for contact tracing?
No. It is for vaccine delivery specifically.
So Cheryl is confused. Have we not been paid? Because it said no funds will be distributed until this document had been signed. So we have not gotten our, the $2 million that we've already expended?
Correct.
So how come it took so long for this document to show up?
Great question. We've been working with the Oregon Health Authority on this for
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of background on that.
I mean, I just was like going, now, I'm reading between the lines and I'm thinking like, it doesn't sound like we've gotten a dime from them.
Yeah, no, we haven't yet. So these things take some time to actually get them put in place. But I, if you recall, we had talked about this over the course of the last six or eight months. And we were originally going down the path to apply to FEMA for these funds, to fund the Vaccine Center. OHA came back to us and said, we are going to provide the opportunity for local health authorities to apply underneath OHA, still for the same FEMA funds. This did a couple of things for us. It removed a little bit of the administrative burden on our part because we went through OHA. And it also broadened the eligibility of costs. So we're able to apply for reimbursement for expenses that we wouldn't have been able to had we gone straight through FEMA. So we made that decision back some time ago and it's just taken, it's just taken a few months for the state to pull the grant agreement together and make sure we've had some chance to review it, going back and forth. So it's just taken a little bit longer time.
And this is happening for all counties or?
It would be all counties and I believe city, all counties, yeah. All counties that
Public health authorities maybe.
Yes, that chose to go underneath, underneath OHA.
I wondered at the time if that was, if that was going to back us up even more. And, yeah, I guess it has.
Yep.
When we said we were going to use the state.
Well, but this is, it's kind of clear and done now, though, too.
It's kind of clear and done. And again, it's, it's removed some of the administrative burden for us and that's good. And because essentially, we're a contractor for OHA, not a project recipient from FEMA.
Yep, yep.
And there's a difference for that and it's not
No, I think this may be very valuable, Commissioner Dare.
And we're also able to
I know, it's only $2 million, right?
Expand, expand what the eligibility, cost eligibility is. We'll be able to expand that. So we're able to actually ask for more funding to come back than we would have had we gone directly through FEMA.
Yeah, given, given what our money could be earning us in investments, you know, or otherwise, you know, waiting a little bit longer to get, to have a much broader range of things eligible for reimbursement is, it seems like a pretty good deal.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't know that we would have received the funding any sooner if we'd gone directly to FEMA.
And that's what I'm assuming, but I wouldn't know for sure. So this is a document for Chair signature, just acknowledging.
So I move Chair's signature of document number 2021-640, the intergovernmental agreement with OHA.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Seeing nine Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, item number eight, COVID-19 update. We had estimated possibly 9:30 AM start. So we're right at 10, 10:05. And I'll acknowledge that in discussions for the agenda, we had always put COVID-19 up at 10 o'clock. And we just, this last time, we determined that we would just let it float with the agenda. Funny that it got close to 10 o'clock again, but we thought it would be a little earlier. So thanks for everybody for standing by.
Magic number.
Do we have a, do we have the
So there was a PDF. I didn't print out for myself, so we haven't been provided a copy of the slides today, but it was emailed to us. Yeah, so I guess we didn't get it to be put in our hand yet today. Would you like one? I'm sure.
It's always good.
So Sharon, please confirm if it's available in your email. Audio.
I will bring it down.
Great, thank you so much. So we'll have a copy of the slides in our hands in a few moments. At this time, we can proceed though. I'm comfortable proceeding.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, good. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning, Commissioners. George Conway, Health Services Director. I'll start out. I'll be followed by Crystal Sully, who's a BSN. And she's our, now our Vaccine Operations Supervisor. And Emily Freeland, who is our Response and Recovery Supervisor. Emily Freeland is one of our senior environmental health folks. And with your permission, I'll share.
Yes.
Should see. Larger, there we go. This is our COVID-19 public health update. We have quite a bit of news. So foremost and top of mind is that probably almost wholly attributable to the emergence of the Delta variant in the United States, which, as I mentioned in the meeting, has become the dominant variant or strain in both Oregon and in central Oregon. We're now seeing a very steep increase in cases. We've gone from in the 50s to 70s to last week, 136. And the last full week that we have now, 236. So we'd said about 40, 42. Excuse, that's not right. 30, about 30, over 30 cases per, 33 cases per day. So this is very concerning. You see, it has a steep upward curve that, very similar to what we saw in the period after Mother's Day, the persistent butt flag day. This is very concerning. We're doing contact investigation and tracing to the extent that we're capable of doing that. We're following quite a few number of outbreaks. So also unsurprisingly, our testing rate has gone up. We've tested just over 3,000, or just over 3,000 persons were tested in the last week. And our testing rate is up at one of the prior stated levels of concern that is right at 8% and headed, headed up. As far as when to get tested, we, as we've recommended before, prior to and after travel, particularly high, high incidence areas, if you have symptoms, six to nine days after you're exposed to someone who tests positive. As far as testing for travel, the requirements vary by locale. Many, many international destinations require PCR tests or Hawaii does as well, although they also will accept an acceptable, what we call molecular test or nuclear amplification assay test. So relatively widely available now. It does need to be done within 72 hours of either your departure from the airport or arrival in your locale. And you have to look at the different, you need to look at your destination as far as what those requirements are. And then we have a list and link on deschutes.org COVID testing. And you can, you can go down, there's a map and you use the location for the testing locator. And then on the map, you indicate the type of test and then you need to look at the specs for the turnaround time. And that's actually very important because if you get a test, but it languishes, then it probably won't help you. And we do commend such testing. So not surprisingly, the number of hospitalizations has increased markedly. Really, it's a lagging indicator. So starting Really, it's a lagging indicator, so starting a week or so after the first substantial uptick we had, three, three and a half weeks ago, we started seeing an increase in hospitalizations. They exceeded, I believe that census in the, in the central system exceeded twenty six yesterday. The current count is twenty eight, so it's, it's increased another couple. There are five individuals in ICU and two presumably very, very ill who are on ventilators.
Dr. Conway? I just checked, and it said actually as of this morning at four fifty AM that there are thirty one in St. Charles, four are on ICU, and of those four, two are on ventilators. So that, that's, that just came out a second ago.
I'm actually looking, I'm looking at the epikogroda report from four fifty AM, and that's, that's what I was actually reading from, so I'm not sure about the discrepancy.
Gosh, my, yeah, my website says thirty one.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the full epikogroda report. It's, I know St. Charles is coming out with some press information today because they're very concerned about the hospital census, so it's possible they updated after the, after this release this morning. But in any case, it's, I mean, I would defer to whatever their count is. So staying on hospitalization, one of the thing, one of the measures of interest is the number of persons that are hospitalized that are fully vaccinated and not vaccinated. And you can see that through time, of course, hospitalizations, as we all know, peaked, they were substantial in May, and then decreased in June and July. As a percentage, ninety two percent of those hospitalized are unvaccinated, so the orange is unvaccinated, and it's the predominance, and the blue is fully vaccinated. So we do have about fourteen percent currently that are, that were, well, it's just the beginning of August, but for July, about fifteen percent that were fully vaccinated. And then this is the persons that ended up in the ICU, and this continues to be a small percentage, which roughly, one in six, so sixteen percent of the individuals in the ICU in the last two data points, June and July, have been, have been fully vaccinated. And my understanding is the mean age for them is, is quite high, and each of these individuals, to the best of my knowledge, did have substantial underlying health challenges, chronic diseases.
Dr. Conway, I have a question. So is there any way to start reverse engineering kind of natural immunity or, you know, people that just aren't going to be affected? So why I ask this question is, two people fully vaccinated in the hospital, but there's probably a subset, some proportion of the community that just not even going to be affected by this vaccine, just naturally immune. Is there any way to start reverse engineering that, just an estimate on that kind of population number?
That is, that is possible. I think the, the much more likely and well documented issue is, as individuals age, their immunity, their initial immune response can wane to foreign, foreign infections and foreign other antigens. And we know that by the time of people get in their eighties, and many physicians think of about eighty-five as being a, sort of a tipping point, it's very old.
Don't tell my mother. She's ninety, and she got COVID, and she was vaccinated, and she's, she's getting over it out of the home that she lives in. I believe one or two of the residents that were all fully vaccinated didn't go to the hospital, but apparently everyone is getting, you know, they're recovering. I told my mom she could do it. She's pretty tough.
So then these two people that are fully vaccinated?
Yes.
Do we know the age group?
If I, if I could finish the thought, so the majority of people still will do okay if they've been vaccinated at that age. What, what's going on now is there's a series of studies of the immune response related to vaccination, and the most recently published one, ones were in Israel, and I believe there were other publications in France, showing that Pfizer has published this, that they show some waning immunity over age sixty and more substantial with greater age. So there is consideration about a booster shot for older individuals, and I understand that that's being entertained by the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, which CDC organizes, as well as its FDA counterparts. So we may, we may end up with a booster even for the mRNA vaccines sometime relatively soon. I'm not sure what the age cut point would be. Sixty seems relatively young as far as their understanding of immunophysiology, but that may be a good conservative point. Going back to your original question about natural immunity, there are other people that have different, there's, there's a number of what we call genetically based immunopathies, so people that have different types of immunodeficiencies. There are also various chronic illnesses that can be acquired, which make you less able to mount an immune response. And then people that are taking immunosuppressive drugs, such as post, post transplant of an organ, or for certain, say, connective tissue diseases, steroids, et cetera, that can suppress immunity. So those people, in addition to possibly not having a robust immune response, really will need to continue to take a very cautious approach to being out and in circulation and who they're around, and certainly being very carefully masked. Whereas today, we'll talk quite a bit about primarily getting vaccinated to protect yourself and masking to protect others in the face of this new, new problem. People that are immunosuppressed really would be well advised to have a well-fitted N ninety five mask to protect themselves when they're, when they're in potentially infectious environments as well. Commissioner, does that help at all answer your question?
I was asking about people that are just naturally not going to be affected by COVID nineteen or minimally affected by COVID nineteen. Is there any way to start to kind of reverse engineer an estimate of population that's not affected without a vaccine?
Oh, oh, I see. Well, I'm not, we're, we're actually not, we're not aware of a particular distinct population that's not affected, and our, our understanding has changed in that for quite a while, we thought that young people would be less affected, we thought that children would be less affected, but that hasn't been borne out. So I, I'm not aware, I'm sure there are natural history studies looking at different attributes of persons that are not affected. By and large, people that are infected with COVID do develop some of the microbiologic signs of infection and spread of it, and then there's a continuum of how symptomatic people become. But I'm not aware of a identified attribute that's held up that would help us pinpoint who, who could just basically be brave and assume that they, they would not be touched by this.
Just an estimate of percentage, is all I was wondering.
I've been told several times that type O blood has a twenty percent greater chance of not catching COVID, and I'm wondering how much of, I've been told that by several people, and I'm wondering, how much of our population is type O blood?
Well, first of all, there are natural history studies, but the, the answer would be a much more complex one, because some of those people have type O blood, which is the most common blood type, could also have attributes that would place them at risk. I, I have to say, from my perspective, without very thorough investigation, long-term studies, I don't think looking at a single attribute and, and assuming that that means that you're going to have a substantial measure of protection, especially something that only confers a twenty percent difference in large series, I, I just don't think that that's, that's a good thing to base individual decisions on. I think it's of great medical interest, and the long run might be helpful.
Understood. Thank you.
So the typical message for this, this section is to vaccinate and test, and I can't remember, do you, do you want to go ahead and take over now, Emily? Is this where we, are we going to do a cut point? Okay, thanks very much.
So like Dr. Conway said, my name is Emily Freeland. I am currently the COVID nineteen Response and Recovery Unit Supervisor, and like he mentioned, and like we saw from, from our start of our next kind of wave that we see here, our community spread is, is currently at the substantial level. So I know in the, in the past, we've talked about all these different levels, and we've kind of brought this back down, so we have minimal, moderate, substantial, or widespread, and we're in that substantial category. From the eighteenth to the thirty first of July, we had about one hundred eighty nine cases per one hundred thousand residents, with an average of a six point eight percent positivity rate. So, you know, what does this mean for us, and, and how are we going to kind of handle this moving forward? I think we were all, at least in, in my world, we were hoping we were moving from that response to recovery, and how does that look, and how do we staff, and all of those questions moving forward. But, you know, sadly, our teams are, are handling kind of this next surge of cases kind of borne out by Delta variant, which we've seen, you know, surge in our community. So if we could go to the next slide. Dr. Conway, could you go to advanced slide? Thank you. So the Delta variant, should, should our community be concerned? And the answer basically is yes, and this is based on new data. So a lot of times, we feel, I think, as a community and as individuals, it's like, why don't we have the answers now? And we have been in this for so long, why isn't this information just clear and everything, you know, is one to one from what we think it's going to be? Well, new data is always coming out, and I would describe this as like a molecular arms race. So as we think about, you know, the virus is over here, and it's constantly changing and morphing, and, and tools are coming in, you know, virulences, and Delta has some of those things, and that's why it's spreading in our population. We're over here trying to have tools like vaccination and treatments and, you know, making sure that we're ready, but it's like this arms race between the virus and humans trying to combat all the different things that the virus has. So a couple of things we know about Delta variant is vaccinated people can get breakthrough infections, which we knew always, right? We always knew there was going to be some proportion of breakthrough infections. No, no tool and no vaccine is a hundred percent effective. So all, although these mRNA vaccines are very, very effective, nothing is a hundred percent, and we see that Delta variant, there are breakthrough infections. Vaccinated individuals may represent very small amount of the total transmission, but if you think about what, what Dr. Conway was saying, there's kind of this, this continuum of asymptomatic transmission, so people that aren't showing anything, but they still haven't and are able to transmit, over to people that get really, really sick and are in the hospital for a variety of reasons. We may have shifted that. So hopefully with our vaccine, we have shifted the number of people that are in this category over here, where they're very, very sick and need hospitalization, and moved that so we have a higher percentage of people that are in this, you know, maybe contagious, but have a low, you know, low symptoms or no symptoms while they're contagious, which actually makes it a little bit harder to manage, because people don't know they're sick and they're able to transmit the virus and go out in the community. So that kind of leads to our next point, which is thinking about masks. So nobody wants to wear masks, and, you know, we're all happy to kind of have moved, at least for a very short time, I know I am. I'm not looking forward to, you know, finding all my masks and knowing where they are, keeping them on my bag again, adding that to the list of things to do when I go out. But, you know, in areas where they're substantial, so again, that's us, or high transmission, people should think about wearing a mask in indoor public settings to help prevent Delta variant spread. So no one wants to be that person who's, you know, finds themselves and either presymptomatic or asymptomatic, or really mildly symptomatic, and, and spreading to their neighbors without knowing it. And I think we're back to the point where we would highly recommend, just because there are these breakthrough infections and there are these, you know, we can carry the virus without knowing it and be kind of a vector in our community, so wearing a mask is one way that we can help. And, you know, although it's an inconvenience and it's not fun, it's sort of like putting on our seatbelt or driving on the right side of the road, or those kind of things, where we can do it, it's not a huge inconvenience, and it, it can really help slow the spread in our community, even if we're fully vaccinated. So if you go to the next slide. So again, I kind of touched on this, are the vaccines effective? You know, we know that, that not every vaccine is a hundred percent effective. None of our mitigation strategies are going to be a hundred percent effective. Masks aren't, distancing isn't, air turnover rates aren't, vaccines aren't, none of these are a hundred percent effective, but some are very effective, like vaccines, that's one of our best tools. Obviously, we've been pushing, getting this out there, and we're doing pretty good about getting those vaccine rates pretty high in our community, but we want to think of layering these things. And right now, if you think of like contagion as rain, it's raining pretty hard in our community, although it's not outside and it's smoky, but we want to use that umbrella to kind of help protect our community from that rain that's coming down. So vaccines do work, and they help prevent those severe symptoms, hospitalization, and death, but we're still seeing kind of those breakthrough infections, and which we would expect. You know, we know that's going to happen, it's just at what level, and how does that look in our community? Let me go to the next one. So what can we do? We would really encourage community leaders like yourselves to encourage vaccination and masking to help prevent further outbreaks, especially like we have, you know, substantial transmission. And the next. And then schools, I think there's lots of talk about schools, and I know that there's some changes in the guidance that's coming out from OHA, but whether we're in a place where, where masks are going to be mandated probably like schools, or in some of these other community settings where there's large groups of people and children getting together, we would recommend that, you know, children should return to full-time in-person learning in the fall, but thinking about layering those prevention strategies together to help protect from outbreaks. And we have seen our data from last year, even when we went back to school and kids weren't vaccinated, you know, the transmission in schools, because those prevention measures were pretty high, was low. Where we saw most of our transmission was outside of the actual classroom in more of these social situations, where people were getting together without those prevention measures, those layered prevention strategies. So we, we certainly recommend that people think about that as we move into the fall and back to school time and getting ready. So I'm going to turn it over to Crystal, who's going to talk a little bit more about actual vaccination and how we're looking in our community, because it's still a really, really good tool that we want to employ to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Emily, thank you, Emily. Good morning, Commissioners. So we'll just kind of start with some of the slides that we normally show you that we've updated. You can see we in Dishuts County are sitting at seventy two percent of our population over eighteen has been vaccinated. It's important to note that that seventy two percent reflects not just people who are fully vaccinated, but community members who have gotten their first vaccine shot for those two-shot series vaccines. And next slide. So COVID vaccination by age group, you can look at this and really see that our population of sixty and over is kind of carrying the rest of us in terms of, of percentages. We're trying hard to focus on that twelve to twenty-nine age group that is out in social situations a lot, and we're seeing some movement in the vaccination by that age group. Next slide. And this is just a reflection of our vaccination rate by race and ethnicity. Next slide.
Is that last slide for Dishuts County only, those percentages?
That's correct. That's Dishuts County only. And this is a reminder, we've, we've drove people, you know, during our mass vaccination efforts, we really drove people to our mass vaccine clinic at the Dishuts County Fairgrounds. Now we are in this distributed model, so people can get vaccination. Now we are in this distributed model, so people can get vaccinations from their primary care provider. If they don't have a primary care provider, we have local pharmacies that have engaged in providing vaccines, as well as certain providers who will take anyone and provide a vaccine for them regardless of whether or not they're a patient with that practice, like Mosaic Medical. Deschutes County, we have a number of pop-ups, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. But people can come to this central Oregon COVIDvaccine.com website. It's still in operation. It's still being updated by the entities that are participating in this. So if people want a vaccine, it should be relatively simple for them to come find a place to get one. Again, it's free. There's no insurance or identification required.
So, yeah. All three of us are ready to go.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Crystal, how many people were vaccinated at the fair last week? I know I saw a couple.
Yes, that was great. I'll actually address that in a next slide, if that's all right.
Sure.
My question was, was about basically the effects of the Delta variant on people's willingness to get vaccinated. We're seeing around the country, in some of the states that had very low vaccination rates that are having dramatic spikes in COVID infection due to the Delta variant, that suddenly there are a lot of people also who are deciding that they're going to get vaccinated. I'm wondering if we've observed in central Oregon or in Deschutes County or statewide, a, you know, a rise in interest in getting vaccination related to the rise of the Delta cases?
So actually, in terms of our vaccination totals and what I have access to for the purposes of this presentation is just the vaccinations that we're giving through our Deschutes County pop-up clinics like the fair last week. I will say, we've seen a tremendous increase in the number of vaccines that we're administering at our pop-up clinics. So for example, the week of July 18th, we gave a total of 109 doses of vaccine through our Deschutes County pop-up clinics. Last week, you know, we had our pop-up clinic available at the Deschutes County Fair, as well as our normal ones out in the community. And we went from giving 109 doses the week before to 210 doses last week. Another sort of interesting thing that we've noticed is that our percentage of first doses out of those vaccinations given has really increased. So last week, our percentage of first doses given was up to 74% of our doses. So what that tells me is that, you know, people are coming in and starting their series of vaccination, not just wrapping it up with their second dose with us. We've been asking people who come to our pop-up clinics that are in the community, sort of what drove them to come? Was it incentives or was it something else? And last week, we really heard a combination of three things. So one of them, and I would say the most common thing that people said was they are nervous about the Delta variant. And so, you know, they've seen their friends and coworkers and family members get vaccinated with good results, and so they came to get their vaccine. We've also had people say that they, you know, are, school's starting, so we want to get, you know, vaccinated before school starts again. And also, one of the incentives that we provided last week prior to the fair was an unlimited ride bracelet at the Deschutes County Fair. And that proved to be a really hot-ticket item in terms of incentives that we were offering for vaccination.
So at some point, this is for Dr. Conway and everybody, at some point, it'd be interesting to look at the resources we're providing. So if we send people to Sisters, Lapine, Downtown Ben, and Redmond, if it's two, three, or four people for a couple hours, that's basically their whole day. And it's, you know, there's cost to that. And my thought process is, what about, you know, empowering the clinics or private practices in those areas for scheduling or walk-in or whatever we're going to do? So as the local Public Health Authority Board of Commissioners, I'd just like to be able to think through that instead of have, you know, as I say, staff going out to all these places for a few shots. I mean, just so we know the numbers, I'm not trying to judge that. I'm just trying to make sure that if we could have a decision space, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. So Commissioner, we're actually very attentive to this. I want to provide a little. First of all, since the winding down of the mass vaccination clinics and operations at the fairgrounds, our stance has been to primarily facilitate and track the provision of vaccine to providers, pharmacies, et cetera. We regard ourselves as the provider of last resort and then also the provider in niches that still require attention. I don't, if I can go back a couple of slides, we have considerable difference between different racial and ethnic minority groups. By far, the largest minority, ethnic minority in Deschutes County is Hispanic, Latinx, approaching on 10% of the population as things grow. And we've looked at the different effectiveness of different approaches for different minority groups. We've also looked at the effectiveness of different things like pop-up clinics. The pop-up clinics per dose of vaccine do not appear to have been as effective as if we organize some sort of fun public event, which is more of a gathering. So we've organized some fiestas at local churches, collaborating with the churches. Sometimes other people were the providers of vaccine. That turns out to be a very effective form of outreach for the Hispanic community in Deschutes. We're trying to develop rural area, but that community's large enough that there's a number of organized entities within it, and there's some infrastructure. So if you look at other groups that we're trying to do outreach to, Pacific Islanders, African-Americans, which are, have organized groups, distinctive churches, say, over in the valley, that infrastructure isn't here. So we're still sort of struggling about the best way to do this. So we're still trying to provide different opportunities in different settings, which we know are underserved. We are, as we see diminishing returns with different models, we do walk back on those. And then we're also continue to adjust or titrate the different incentives provided. So we're actually very attentive of this and.
We could possibly, as the board, look at numbers with you and help put direction to this. I know you're attentive, but I'm just, you know, understanding what the number is. You know, if we're, I'm just thinking, I'm envisioning that we have a community clinics and private providers that know how to do injections. And, you know, if there could be one person from our health department, making sure that the vaccines are available at a clinic, that may be different than three people showing up and, you know, hoping somebody shows up for a couple hour period. That's all, that's the only direction I was going there.
We'll be very happy to come back and provide that. We've actually been doing a lot of analysis along those lines. Once again, I will reiterate that we regard ourselves only as providers of last resort. If we hear from any provider that they want more vaccine and they've got something covered, we immediately refrain from vaccinating in that space and we do our best to provide the vaccine or facilitate it. So I do understand the questions being asked. We've done a lot of work on this. We'll be happy to come back and report it. I think it's a complicated question, having maybe even a little more parameters about the particulars of the question would help us to prepare that.
One of the things we learned early on about vaccine hesitancy is that it has to be super easy for people. And going to a doctor's office, the perception that you're going to need to pay or provide insurance, I mean, I think it is a barrier. And so we absolutely want to make sure that the vaccination efforts that we're pursuing are, yeah, as efficient or cost-effective as possible. But we also really need to make vaccine widely available. And rather than kind of ratchet down on the places where we're making vaccine available, I'd rather figure out what we can do to drive more traffic into those areas, you know, into the places where vaccine is being offered so that we can, you know, we can make it, we could make it more cost-effective, you know, by driving the demand side. So, and we'll get into this more at the end of the presentation, but there are things that we can be considering that would encourage more people to get vaccinated faster.
The thing, I look at it probably the opposite way. I'm hoping, I know originally only maybe five doctors in Deschutes County had ordered, private practitioners had ordered COVID shots by husbands internist to be one. And, you know, I think because we do have that hesitancy, I believe that people need to trust the person that they're talking to. And if they have a relationship with their doctor, I would hope that all the doctors that are in Deschutes County do have the availability to give the vaccinations. I think that could really be a powerful tool, and especially if they go off emergency status, I believe what Pfizer, they're looking at that currently. And I think that's probably going to reassure people, because I do feel that it is a personal choice. And I know a lot of people, you know, if they could just talk to their own doctor, they might feel better. So hopefully, it'll go off emergency. And if the private physicians do have it, I think that would be wonderful.
I just, the scenario that comes to mind is pushing on a rope, you know? Fine, we can just keep pushing, but at some point, it gets silly and everybody sees that it's silly. So, well, let's just work through it. I'm just sharing my thoughts on this. You know, people are making their choices, making decisions. I mean, if anybody is living under a rock and hasn't heard that vaccines are readily available in your community and not wanting it, the choice has been made. So we can keep pushing on a rope, but, you know, there may be a policy choice here at the Board of Commissioners to stop pushing on a rope at some point. That's just kind of where I'm at.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Crystal, please.
I just, I appreciate the comments and the questions, Commissioner, because I think that sometimes we get buried in the work. And so it's good to have the questions and ask the questions. Something that we've, you know, really discovered is that, especially with our BIPOC community in Deschutes County, part of this is, as Commissioner Adair, you said, this is a trust question. And so, you know, being there, week after week, you know, for several weeks after the mass vaccination clinic, weren't seeing increasing numbers. Now we're seeing increasing numbers, week by week. We had a big bump this last week, I think, because of the fair. We did 71 doses at the fair, Commissioner Adair. And so we also had increased vaccinations at our standing clinics, not just at the fair. So, you know, part of this is really being there and continuing to be there. And the thing that our vaccination pop-up, you know, clinics have that our private physicians sometimes don't is the ability to have conversation and provide education with people who want to ask the questions. They may not want to be vaccinated that day, and that's okay. But they can come to us and ask questions and get their questions answered until they feel ready or not ready to make a decision to get vaccinated. So we're trying a number of things. We're in close contact with our other providers who are having the vaccine, but maybe have some difficulties administering that vaccine because the way their practices run. So we're doing our pop-ups. We're also partnering with other, you know, local organizations like the Latina Community Association and providing some weekend and evening hour opportunities. So I look forward to coming back and having a bigger discussion about how we deliver vaccine in the community. I think it's worthy of the discussion. So we can go to the next slide.
If I could just, if I could just make another comment now before we go on with the presentation, I want to talk about pushing on a string. We're seeing a number of employers around the nation, the federal government, large Fortune 500 companies, Kaiser Permanente here in the state of Oregon, deciding that they're going to make vaccines mandatory for their employees. Or if not, you know, if you don't want to get vaccinated, then you got to do weekly testing, or you got to wear a mask, or you have to do something to contribute to controlling the spread of COVID. And that is something that we could consider doing as an employer of 1,000 people in Deschutes County to model for our community and to model for other employers that vaccines are our best tool for controlling the spread of COVID. So if we want to stop, if we want to talk about stopping pushing a string, I'd like to put that out there as a concept for the board to consider.
Well, so it gets back to the concept of, you know, what are we trying to do here? Hurt immunity is going to happen. I mean, I have some family, friends, all four, mom and dad and two kids all got COVID. They stayed home for a few days and now it's over. So does that mean that they need to get vaccinated? We need to worry about it? Or does that add to the hurt immunity numbers? Delta variant, does this mean that somebody, I mean, we need to know a little bit more information. Ooh, somebody called something a Delta variant. Now we need to be worried again. We need to be worried about what? You know, if people have made choices about being vaccinated or not being vaccinated, wearing a mask or not being a mask, is the solution going to be more government control and panic? Or is it going to be, well, we're here to manage this the best we can. We are going to, you know, empower health services, you know, our healthcare system to manage this the best we can. But why would we be forcing people to do something?
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about government control. I mean, you know, if Kaiser Permanente and, you know, big tech companies are requiring their employees to get vaccinated, that's not government control. That's a choice that an employer makes to model. I am, yeah. As, as, as the policymaking body for an employer, a major employer, that's not a decision that you have to make as, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking us to try to mandate, that mandate vaccination for the entire county, you know, for every 200, all the 200,000 people. And we are, we are far from hurt immunity. I mean, you look at the number of cases that we've had, you have 9,000, 10,000 cases, reported cases, plus the, you know, 100-something thousand people who've been vaccinated. There's 200,000 people in Deschutes County. That is a lot of people who, as far as we know, haven't had COVID and who have not been vaccinated yet.
Yeah, so there's some good things here. So 10,000 cases, known cases in Deschutes County. So I'm going back to the first slide of this deck.
Almost 11.
I would, I would assume, so that's why I asked my question earlier, I would assume that, you know, some number multiplier of that. So 10,000 cases, so times two, times three, times five maybe, have been exposed possibly. So I don't know, and I'm not a, you know, epidemiologist, I'm not a scientist on this. So these are just questions in my head, so I can't answer these. But, you know, some number, 10,708 times something is we've been exposed.
Okay, so why is this curve spiking like this right now? If so many people are already immune to COVID, why is this curve spiking like this? Why is this curve going to surge for the next, for the next six to eight weeks? It's because there's still lots and lots of unvaccinated people.
If there's zero deaths or minimal deaths with people with underlying conditions, do we panic because of that? Or do we say, oh, it's a shame somebody passed away, they had underlying conditions, and they've been tested positive for COVID? So then it's a function of the death rate.
The more, the more.
I'm at home for a couple of days with a fever and don't feel well, and I recover from it?
The more we let COVID run through our population, the more it mutates, the sooner we get a variant that our vaccine doesn't work for.
So Dr. Conway, you can help us clarify this, because we're going back and forth now. So that.
No, we're not going back and forth. We're advancing down a path and I'm asking questions, which you don't have answers to.
But so then the flu in our society has been like this for generations, and the human condition is sometimes we get sick. human condition is sometimes we get sick. And I would wonder, you know, what's so different about this?
And the flu is far less lethal than COVID. Many times less lethal than COVID.
So, but how can you say that? I mean, I wouldn't have the expertise on that.
How can we say that? We've had, we've, we've had that data presented to us in multiple prior presentations.
Of viruses, is what I was referring to. I wasn't referring to, I, I agree, it's 10 times more, it has been 10 times more deadly in the last 12 month period. Is it going to be 10 times more deadly in the future? Since we have 70%-
We could, we could ask Dr. Conway about that.
Yeah, that's where I'm-
Actually, I'm, I'm happy to-
So thank you very much for listening to this.
Sure. I'm happy to try to answer the, the last question. And it's a pretty straightforward answer. We have no idea. It's, it, mutations occur the more frequently based on the more susceptible individuals that it can replicate it. So far, we've vaccinated a very small percentage worldwide. This particular strain moved like wildfire through India in, starting in March through May, is attributed, there's as many as 3 million deaths attributed to that wave in, in India, 3 million excess deaths while we're still counting the actual cases. So that's, that's a potential harbinger of things that could reoccur. We're doing our best to keep up and adapt. The other thing, Commissioner Tabone, I want to comment on, so we, we think of functional herd immunity. So it's important to realize that, that the natural history studies that we were talking about earlier, that, that would elucidate different people and the differential natural resistance to this have also very well documented that infection with COVID does typically provide some immunity. However, that immunity typically wanes within 90 days and starts diminishing. The antibodies start falling within 90 days. And the titers attained, the level of antibody that's attained by natural infection is not nearly as high as the antibody that's attained particularly after the two highly effective vaccines, which are most common in the United States, the mRNA vaccines. So we do have a recommendation that anyone that's been infected with COVID strongly consider being vaccinated, typically anytime after 90 days after their first infection and sooner if they've been asymptomatic for a few weeks. So, so actually, the assumption that people having had this, especially when a variant's emerged, may or may not be an appropriate criterion or input for functional herd immunity. So just for what that's worth.
So I've just kind of jumped in tracks a little bit. Should we have more DNA sequencing capacity? Maybe we need to set up more lab activity in central Oregon? Because this is where we started with. If we can get a PC, if we could not get a PCR test when we started a year and a half ago, you know, I remember calling around thinking, okay, well, how can we set up a lab? And I used to work in one of these that we've talked about in the past. Yeah. Should we be doing something like that?
Yes. I, I, I think that we should. It would be very helpful. There are, it is possible now to do sequencing. St. Charles is able to do it with the pantherologic system, but it's very expensive and labor intensive. I, I have to point out that there have been discussions in the past. I don't remember anything formal about this body, but it has been mentioned in some discussions. So-
Or even just a private lab, you know, somebody that has the services and that we could contract with because that's-
Well, that, I think that's an option. I think that in general, Eastern and Central Oregon suffer with timeliness of laboratory services in general. There has been discussion among the health officers, there have been some proposals in the past about the state labs setting up a secondary lab in central Oregon to serve the Eastern and Central lab. You know, when we have snow, when we have fires, it can take days to get some of these specialty work done. In the interim, contracting, if there is a local laboratory willing to do it, to rapidly sequence would be helpful. Right now, as far as Delta, that particular point is probably moot. It's dominant. We're doing enough wastewater and others, other sampling. St. Charles is sharing the dashboard for their, their sequencing. So, so we know that Delta is dominant. There is a new substrate called Delta Plus, which is some concern. South Korea has reported some transmission. One of them was an American that visited there, and it has a slight difference in the spike protein, which may actually add some nuances of, of, of risk. I think the thing that unfortunately, Nahad Sodarzodi and I had a long conversation about this yesterday. I think the unfortunate thing is that this may end up being a real long haul. This is a relatively new virus. It's, it's from a tribe of viruses that have been, we've known, caused human head colds for years. But it's, it's got more of a wallop. It kills people. And mercifully, not everyone, more like 1% of the people that are infected, we're getting better at managing this. But we, this may be something that we'll be struggling with for some time. And then when we get to the end of the presentation, I want to, I want to point out a couple of other things just to sort of ponder going forward, but I'll, I'll get out of Crystal.
Another jump in a track again. So maybe we should be adding ICU capacity or a special unit for COVID patients. If it's the long haul and we want, you know, the hospital system, we're going to want to do regular health maintenance, maybe we start to add capacity at that ICU incubator level. And, you know, I mean, that's managing the problem, obviously, but we don't want to always be in panic mode if we are, if we're going to possibly have, you know, a subset of people in the hospital in ICU with this conditions for the next year and a half or two or five years.
It goes beyond, it goes beyond rooms and hardware. I mean, we don't have enough hospital staff to, you know, nationally to, to deal with, you know, this higher level of people who need hospitalization.
Yeah. And unfortunately, that, that issue is backing up down, down the line. It's not just a, a hospital issue. It's also a skilled nursing facility and adult foster home issue. And so, you know, surgeries where, where people would normally recover in the hospital for a night and then go to a skilled nursing facility, there, there's not the movement there. I think we could have St. Charles, you know, come and, and talk about that issue more, but.
Right. Well, St. Charles actually will, will be putting out some public information today about that. They're concerned about their facilities being overwhelmed. It is a confluence of many, many different things in our, in our, that are not, that are not unique here, but are somewhat unique in the American, very fragmented healthcare system. I, St. Charles, the, the, some of their leadership were in touch yesterday with a series of conversations. They'll be coming out with some things today. The convergence though is that what we can do right now is really ask, encourage, and model people wearing masks until we get through this surge and really encouraging people that have not been vaccinated to vaccinate. Those are the things that are at hand. They are available. Thank God we're not here. We're not Liberia, which has only had enough vaccine, that vaccinate less than 1% of their population despite having been ravaged by COVID just five or six years ago. So we're very fortunate to have ample vaccine with ample masks. We all get through this current surge if we do those things. And that'll buy us time to figure out how to staff our hospitals and all those other things.
I wanted to say something because in July of 2019, the hospitals in Oregon, with the exception of Legacy Emanuel, the hospitals in Idaho, and I'm not sure about Cadillac in the tri-cities, but there was not a bed available July of 2019. And I was, I had my ambulance meeting here with Tom Kuhn, and that's what he told me. And I was like, oh my gosh. So I did some research on this. The hospital I was born in, in Pendleton, in 1922, had 75 beds. They built a brand new 104,000 square foot new hospital to, you know, in the early 2000s. And guess how many beds they have there now? Today's day, they have 24 beds. 100 years ago, they had 75 beds. And you know, Umatilla County has definitely grown from there. So it's really, they have, you know, I've talked to people about it. And it's a, it's a problem. A lot of communities have much smaller hospitals in rural Oregon, much smaller hospitals. And then what happens is then the doctors actually leave because there's not enough beds for them to work with their patients. So they have to go somewhere where there's actually beds. So anyway, that's really what I learned before we had COVID hit. And yeah, there was not a bed available except for Legacy Emanuel. And there's a whole story there why you, that's, yes.
So I'd-
That's the burn center.
I'd like to return to Dr. Conway's emphasis on masks. So the, the CDC has, has recommended that we encourage mask wearing in communities where spread is at substantial or extreme levels. This is something that we can do in Deschutes County. We are the local public health authority. And at this point, the, the state is not, the state is not governing masking and business closures or openings. So I, I believe it's, it's our responsibility if we, if we believe that COVID is spreading very rapidly in our community right now and that masks are an effective way of reducing transmission of the disease, to, to take this small step of, of offering a, a strong recommendation. This is not a requirement, but a strong recommendation that people in our community and public places mask up. And I'm not really excited about doing that. When I got vaccinated, I thought that, that was my, my ticket to freedom. But conditions have changed and I'm willing to put my, you know, I brought my mask, I'm willing to put it back on. And to recommend to everyone that they, they wear masks inside and that they, yeah, that they, that they were, that they wear masks inside. So I, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from my colleagues whether they would support a strong recommendation to wear masks indoors during this period where we're seeing rampant spread of COVID in our community.
So there's guidance from CDC and Oregon Health Authority at this time. You know, personally, I'll be putting on a mask, going to the grocery store. There's just those other kind of variables in my life that I can reduce. But I don't have any other statements at the commission level at this time.
It's interesting. I, you know, we, what did we do? We closed down for a couple of weeks to stop the spread. And, you know, at some point in time, did that work? No.
It worked.
Well, no, no, no. You look at the numbers-
The amount of COVID, the amount of COVID we would have had in Oregon without the, the protections and, and requirements that were put in place at the state level, I mean, we would have, you know, we would have looked like all those states, you know, we were one of, we are and were one of the best states in terms of control of COVID and control of the number of cases of COVID in the state.
But look at us a couple of months ago, though. Our numbers were really, you couldn't explain why our numbers were so high. Deschutes County is at, what, 72% now vaccinated? It's 5.5% of people have had COVID. So, you know, and I-
There was a, there was a nationwide surge in COVID.
No, Oregon was one of the worst at that point in time. And therefore, yesterday, someone from the CDC said, made the statement in the morning, children should be wearing masks at their house. Then he walked that back. I just feel like right now, I've seen information on both sides regarding the Delta variant. I've seen that it's horrible, it's highly contagious, and it's really not, it's not deadly, but it's highly, highly contagious. So, you know, with the colds, what happened to the colds?
So are, are you saying that masks don't work?
I'm saying that we, cloth masks don't work. I believe there's a study from Belgium that was like 6,000 people or something. You've got to have like an N95 cat mask, or you've got to have a serious mask that, you know, actually, I believe the surgery masks, they're supposed to be on the good list, but I'm always wondering about them. But supposedly they are on the good list. I just would like to see a little more data. I've seen all sides of the story the last three days. I've been listening to it. And I feel like, okay, what is it? Are we going to, are we actually going to stop this? Or do we, you know, is it just going to keep going on and going on, mutating and mutating and mutating? Because that's what it seems like it's doing. If you look at the deaths of the state of Oregon for last year, the death was not a spike of 5,000 more people. I think, wasn't it like at 42,000 or something? There wasn't like this huge spike. And yet, and the country's death, actually, there wasn't a huge spike for the country's death. And yet, what is it? 500, 600,000 people have been attributed to COVID. So, but there wasn't this huge spike. So-
In total.
In total. Yeah. There wasn't a huge-
I'd like to, I'd like to ask, I mean, if, if, if there are questions about the efficacy of masks, I'd like to ask Dr. Conway to bring back data, you know, the most definitive data that he can assemble to, 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 to take that apart. And, you know, help us understand as policymakers, as the local public health authority, whether masks are effective or not in containing, containing COVID.
Well, they were saying that cloth ones weren't. And I see all these cute adorable cloth masks. And sure, I'd love to have one, but if it's, if you're, it's just like you're just wearing it and it's not doing anything, then that's really not the right message.
All, all cloth masks are not the same.
So one of the things-
The amount of layers of fabric you have, the, the density of that fabric, these are all things that make a difference.
I, I would like to acknowledge and thank the community for the culture of allowing people to wear masks if they'd like. The distance, the, the, the space that is being offered by community members at the stores. I mean, people are respecting each other's space better. I mean, it's amazing watching the, just the, when you're standing in line to go, people are just spread out a little bit more. People are a lot, you know, I mean, it's a wonderful experience to go to the store these days, seeing that people are, you know, either wearing a mask or not, but also giving people space.
Very respectful.
And wiping, yeah, wiping down surfaces. I mean, we are doing, it's culturally night and day compared to what we used to do just a few years ago.
I, I would 100% agree. If the rest of the nation took COVID as seriously as Deschutes County does, this would be, this pandemic would be dramatically smaller and less severe. So I, I absolutely want to commend and appreciate and respect the effort and the sacrifice that our community has made to date. And I also want to say that, you know, in part because the rest of the country isn't doing as good a job as we are, and because there are people in our community who have been hesitant to get vaccinated or have been hesitant to wear masks, we need to do a little better. And this is a key moment for us to do that. I, I can guarantee you that, that, that curve that we just looked at, we're at the start of it. And, and we're going to have another wave of COVID here. And people justifiably will be able to ask later on, you know, it's, this is not the beginning of the pandemic anymore. We know, we know what, what works to contain COVID. And people will justifiably be able to ask, why didn't you do something? This is a, this, this, this next wave is entirely preventable. Well, so, so the-
That's a point of view and there's-
So the, so the, so, so specifically, specifically there, there is not support to make a recommendation for masking in indoor spaces. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? I want to answer.
Well, the recommendation is already there, so you're asking for more, and I'm not interested in more.
It's, it's not a, yeah, I don't, I don't want to do a mandate at this moment. I do want to-
It's not a mandate, it's a recommendation.
I want to remind people to please wash their hands, sing happy birthday three times, whatever it takes, but please, I think that's really-
I want you to do it twice.
Well-
Washing your hands doesn't help with a respiratory disease.
It, it does. Because when you shake people's hands, it does, truly, it must have helped.
With the discussion being had, thank you. I mean, there's passion on both sides here as I say that. Yeah.
Okay.
We'll go from there. Next slide. We're almost done.
Actually, I, I do want to answer one of the-
Sure.
-plausible technical questions that was asked. So what we're recommending to people broadly- broadly do, and we, we know a lot about masks, just like we know a lot about COVID, COVID to the point of all being quite, quite second of the topic, understandably. The type of mask we're asking people to wear to protect others is just basically any multi-layer cloth mask, or a procedure mask, or a surgical, surgical type mask. This surgical mask is thinner, but it has a, has a charged membrane that helps contain particles. But both of those are sufficient to contain most of the particles in a cough or a sneeze. So that's what we're asking people to do to protect others. On the other hand, as I mentioned earlier, if you're immunosuppressed, let's say that you're in a household where one of your family members is ill with COVID, and you've elected to stay home and nurse them, or any number of other circumstances, and you're trying to don a mask to protect yourself, that should be an N95 mask. It's very effective in excluding particles, viruses, bacteria when you're breathing in. Ideally, it should be fit tested, but at least it should have a good seal, following the seal test suggestions on the package or going on the company's website. So those are the things that we're suggesting that people do. So if you have to protect yourself, you need a higher level mask, but as far as protecting others, a multi-layer cloth mask, or a procedure mask, or surgical mask, that, that sort of thing, both will be adequate to protect others if you happen to sneeze, or cough, or if you're singing, or whatever. So just, just to make that distinction. Crystal?
So in terms of our clinics, just a reminder, they're open to anyone 12 or older. No insurance or identification is needed. We've heard from the community that there are not a lot of places to ask questions and have discussion about vaccines. Oftentimes, you know, people's primary care provider aren't able to have that at length discussion. So we'll be advertising to the public that they can come to our clinics and just ask questions, that they don't have to get a vaccine at that time. They can come back later if they'd like one. Next slide.
Crystal, one thing important to mention is that a parent must accompany the, the child from 12 to 14. So I do think that's important to remind, remind our community.
Yes. And this is just, I got the shots. It's an Oregon Health Authority marketing tactic that we put in here and want to, want to support. Next slide. And this is just, if anyone has any questions. So a reminder that we update regularly our COVID-19 page on our deschutes.org website. People can email healthservices@deschutes.org. That comes to someone who is on our team, either the Vaccine Operations Team, or COVID Recovery, and that team. And then a reminder that people with questions can call our COVID-19 vaccine hotline. It's open Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. And we do have a Spanish speaking option available on that line.
Would it be possible, Dr. Conway, next week, or in two weeks, to cover therapeutics? So our community actually knows if they catch COVID, what, should they do if they're not really sick and they don't want to get sick and go to the hospital? What are the therapeutics that the CDC is now recommending? I know we're apparently vitamin D deficient. We cover up, we wear sunscreen, et cetera. So if, if we could talk about that perhaps next time, that would be really appreciated by a lot of people that don't see their doctor on a routine basis.
We'll be very happy to do that. I think Dr., we'll bring Dr. Fawcett back to do that.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you so much.
As a board-certified infectious disease physician, that we're very fortunate that was a part-time and on-call health officer. He'd be an appropriate one. So there is, may I stop this slide? Or are there any that you have questions about?
No.
Okay. So there is one thing I, I wanted to comment on, because it's, it's, it's something that's very much afoot. And I wanted to be, I'd say relatively candid about this, but also try to explain a lot of the interaction and the questioning of it. So the first thing I want to do is I want to acknowledge that everybody is very tired and impatient to return to fully normal life. So there are no epidemiologists, medical providers, or others that are deriving any pleasure, or for that matter, schadenfreude, from asking people to endure the additional inconvenience of either avoiding very busy gatherings or masking. So, so this is not something that, that's anything other than precautionary. And I do want to address the, the public policy debate that went on more in, in camera, was whether or not, a couple of months ago, to tell vaccinated people that they could go unmasked. It was just slightly more than 50/50 that prevailed, saying that if we didn't reward people by letting them go unmasked, it would not motivate people, it'd be, wouldn't be a powerful motivator for people to be, to be vaccinated. So many of us were concerned, well, what will happen if something occurred where we have to ask people to mask again? It'll be more difficult, et cetera. So it was, the, the opinion prevailed, that it was better to encourage vaccination and take the marginal risk at that time, with the variants that we had then, that there could be an additional infection or two as a result, because we know that there are always going to be breakthrough cases. None of these vaccines are 100% effective. So now, we have this new information, and I think we're probably going to go through cycles of this. New information, this virus has mutated. One of the effective mutations that's very transmissible, mercifully not much more dangerous, just more transmissible, has occurred, which does lead us to ask people to wear that small piece of cloth and put it on your face again, to protect others, for us to get through this. And clearly, if you're not vaccinated, please, please consider getting vaccinated. We'll do our best to make it as easy as possible. So I hope that sheds some light on that. This is, this isn't a question of, there's not a huge flipping and flopping in the technical opinion about what to do. But some of these things involve choices based on public policy. And then new information does, on occasion, require us to, to ask to either tread backwards, or to do something that, that we thought we'd gotten past. And I do, I do want to express my sympathy for people feeling very tired and irritated by the whole thing. And I think we all feel it. And I think we have to acknowledge that. We do have to be very, I'd say, patient and graceful with each other. And I'm glad that the, two of the commissioners come in on how people are being polite and showing some grace in crowded spaces, like stores and whatnot. And I think that, that's a very good response. And I just hope that we can, you know, continue to be patient and work with each other and get through all this. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And I do want to remind everyone that my mother, who's 90, who I, and I really honestly didn't want her vaccinated because she's very frail at this point in her life, did get COVID, and she does appear to be getting better. So that was really nice to see that the elderly, as you call them, people, Dr. Conway, like 80s, 90s, did catch it. And, but they, I believe that most of them were making it through it. So that was nice news.
Glad to hear that, Commissioner.
Discussing the, discussing a vaccination requirement for our employees, and discussing a recommendation that people wear masks, where's the, the key things I wanted to talk about? We've covered them already.
Thank you. Okay. So we are doing this every two weeks. As I say, just for your information, we basically, just putting it on the schedule where, where it fit. If there's a hard request for 10 o'clock like we used to do, let me know. But at this time, we were just aiming for, you know, kind of mid-morning on Wednesday every other week. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. So we do have another agenda item before lunch, American Rescue Plan. But how about we take a five-minute break? It's been quite a morning already.
Okay.
Thank you for standing by. Item number nine is American Rescue Plan Funding Update. So we've, thank you very much for joining us. Greg Munn.
Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Munn, Chief Financial Officer and County Treasurer. And with me is Dan Emerson, the county's Budget Manager. And we have the pleasure to be working through the ARPA funding with you over the next couple of years. So this is our next iteration of conversation with you. Last time we met was on July 14th. Oh, and also, just, we're on page 52 to 63, for anybody that's watching on Zoom, on the agenda. So our last meet was July 14th, and at that point, the Board approved 2.855 million in ARPA projects. And again, that's 2.855 of a total $38 million award that will, we have been awarded, and we've received half of that, $19 million so far this year. Of that 2.855, there's nine projects that were awarded. The isolation, some liability insurance to cover the isolation motel of a little over $8,000. UV sanitizer for the jail at $40,000. About $15,000 to finish off COVID testing contract that we had that was originally granted under the CARES Funding Act. Capital Campaign match for the Ronald McDonald House of $100,000. The Little Kits Early Learning and Childcare Center match funds of $1 million. $100,000 for the Veterans Village construction. Bethlehem Inn, complete the construction of the year-round shelter in Met in Redmond. That was a match also for $450,000. And managed camp support to the City of Bend match of $750,000. And formal approval to fund the administrative expenses for the county associated with administering the ARPA funds over the next few years. That was $392,000. At that time, the Board also asked for further follow-up on a couple of items. One of those items was how, the question about business support and how to determine the economic impact of the pandemic on businesses that weren't able to access the prior CARES or other federal funding assistance programs as a result of the health emergency. And just to give you a follow-up on that, we've begun the process of partnering with the chambers and COIC to reach out and identify those businesses who suffered loss during the pandemic that were not able to access previously available funding. Judy Trego from the Sisters Chamber has volunteered to step up and help organize that with the other chambers and COIC. So we're actually in the process of, today, an email went out to, to organize a meeting next week. So as soon as we have something to report, we'll follow back up with you on that piece.
So question is, are businesses going to be empowered to put a case together? I guess which way is the, the conversation going to flow, is the question. You know, here's, here's my case for this amount of money, giving it to Judy, so we see it. Or should we set up some more parameters around that?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it. But essentially, the, the rules under ARPA is that it, if there's an economic impact as a result of the public health emergency, then it's eligible for ARPA funding. So I don't know that we-
So they're still getting more clarity from that.
Yeah. And so we're operating under the interim final rule right now. And those comments have been in on that. And we're expecting the final rule, I believe, towards the end of August.
That's fine, okay.
So we'll know more.
So just making sure we're on the same page. I'm envisioning it's that, kind of that possible membership organization, like a gym, that, that had obvious dip in revenues, but it wasn't hard start and stop, like a restaurant. They didn't quite qualify for what was being offered in the, in the last year, year and a half. So if there's a case along that lines in that scenario, there's probably multiple cases like that. So then, yeah, we still don't even know the scope. I'm thinking, you know, thousands of dollars per month kind of number. But I, I mean, maybe it's bigger than that. I don't even know.
Yeah, exactly. And I think you're right. Those are the, those are the businesses we want to try to capture.
Yeah.
Ones that have fallen outside of any of other, any of the other-
But truly can, yeah, justify and show revenue loss.
And again, we're, we're, we're working on this with new rules as we go. And so we'll, we'll have some sort of a mechanism, the best of our ability, that we can capture those folks.
Great.
Second item that you asked for feedback on was to provide a comprehensive understanding of the gaps in the childcare situation, available childcare. So we've reached out to some experts in our community. And we've, they'll report back on an, with an overview of the childcare by type of care, location, and overall supply. They're going to compare to our 2019 baseline for early care and education planning. We're scheduling this for the August 16th work session. So that would be in a week and a half from today, Monday, the 16th. So we're pulling that together right now. Brenda Camino will be here, and a couple of other folks who are involved deeply within childcare. So the hope, the goal there is to be able to come back with a comprehensive information, data presentation that helps the Board understand where those gaps in our childcare are, so that perhaps that will give you some, enough information to make some funding decisions using ARPA.
So information we've learned since we talked about that, you know, there's home-based providers, six, six or eight kids in the neighborhood. There's education centers, early learning centers. So there's existing industry that's been out there, just, you know, the, the service of childcare. And there's already, it's been stated that, hey, you know, it's great that we're going to maybe redesign the solution. But if the solution includes, you know, raising wages for everybody, which nobody would be against, because really change some different, and, you know, if there's big changes here, there could be big changes there. And we need to make sure we understand what that is. Because it could just blow some parents and, and workers out of the water if we're not careful. Whatever that looks like, I just want to acknowledge that.
Right, right.
And I want to acknowledge that ReVillage wasn't on our list today, but I just did talk to you, Greg, and, and Dan, about that. And what they are doing is providing high need, low income families at an average cost of $350 a month for children. So I believe that will be added to our list. So, thank you for doing that.
Yep. The third option that you asked for feedback, follow-up on, was to provide an overview of the irrigation project details, and how that project relates back to ARPA eligibility. And so we've asked some of our experts here. We have Kate Fitzpatrick with the Deschutes River Conservancy. And she's provided a three-page summary that I believe was placed in your box last night. So you probably have that with you now. And I know there's also more information that was just placed on your, your seats there during the break. And so she and her folks are here for a brief presentation. So I'm going to turn that over to her. Dan and I are going to step back. And when she's done, we'll come back with a few more items.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us come today and provide more information. This is also Erin Kilcullen from the Deschutes Soil and Water Conservation District. And our third partner on this is Central Oregon Irrigation District, although nobody was able to join us today. They helped develop this proposal with us. And we were pleased to have a request from you all to kind of take the three proposals that are, different proposals our groups came in with, and with a request to sort of streamline that together and come to you with a coordinated approach, which is what we're doing today. So we came a couple of months ago and provided some background information on water in the basin. So some of this should, you know, sound familiar to you. But we're going to get very specific about how we think some ARPA funds could really help move us forward right now. Next slide. Oh, I can do this. Okay. So just a preview of what we think the benefits are, and then we'll go into the specifics of the project. We really think this is, a lot of existing work is happening right now in on-farm efficiencies in water conservation. And that sort of a one-time investment of ARPA funds could really provide some surge capacity to get this work going. That would really contribute to future progress. It leverages significant federal, state, and local investment, and I'll get specific about that. Again, it leverages the partnerships we have with COID, Deschutes River Conservancy, Soil and Water Conservation District, as well as the NRCS. It provides tangible and real water conservation outcomes, both for rivers and for farmers. It improves irrigation operations. It reduces red tape for farmers to get these projects on the ground. Provides pandemic relief for farmers from an economic perspective. And drought resiliency, you're all aware that we're in the third year of extreme drought right now. In the paper today, you saw that Arnold Irrigation District shut down operations on Saturday. That's really unprecedented for them to shut down so early in the season. And impacts are just being felt in every irrigation district across Deschutes County, as well as the tri-county area. So this is really a timely program. This is just what we came to you last time and shared, that we have really tangible information on water shortages in the- on water shortages in the basin, and they range from 200,000 to 400,000 acre feet, depending on the water year. So significant shortages both for rivers as well as agriculture. We're working on basin-wide collaboration right now to accelerate the solutions. And we have an integrated toolbox to work with, one of which main, the main strategy is, is on-farm conservation that we're talking about today.
Put that in perspective, my thought is, what's, what's the storage capacity of Wicke Up, do you know, offhand?
Yeah, that's a great reference point. It's 200,000-
That's what I thought. So about the size of Wicke Up. That's exactly what I was thinking.
We need to replace Wicke Up reservoir, basically, yeah, that water supply. And again, just a reminder, this is, you know, highlights some of the needs for the river. This is the Upper Deschutes River below Wicke Up Dam, when it flows really low. And again, we have water needs for agriculture. We're all, all familiar with that challenge as well.
So, real quick, so just put in perspective again, water needs for agriculture. So they allocated water, irrigation water for agriculture. You know, because we were just having a conversation about the difference between Hood River County and their, their, their high-value farmland. And because the Commissioner mentioned EFU, I was like, oh, yeah, EFU. But in Deschutes County, we have this placeholder called EFU, which is un-irrigated, high-desert parcels that are zoned EFU, but they're not ever, they've never been farmed, you know, which is just interesting.
Yeah, so what we're trying to do for agriculture is create reliable water rates that already exist.
Yeah, for the existing water rights. That's what I was referring to.
Yeah, and as we talked about before, each irrigation district, it varies based on priority date, how reliable their water is. So North Unit Irrigation District in Jefferson County is at the end of the line, and they're facing the worst scarcity this year. But even COID, who usually has their full allocation this year as a senior district, does not have their full allocation. They're operating at about 60, 70%. So that's also pretty unprecedented. So we're just trying to create the reliability for the existing acres. So the program that we're talking with you about today is a two-pronged approach. On the, on the left is the Smith Rock Kingway area of Central Oregon Irrigation District. And I'll go into more detail, but we're targeting about 80% of our ARPA proposed funds to this area, because it's a really strategic place to invest right now in some high-priority outcomes. And then we also have a countywide investment approach, where we want to spread some of those dollars around to other farmers and other irrigation districts to give them opportunities to improve their systems as well.
So are we talking about like a third of the COID? Irrigators are actually flood irrigators. So is, is it going to target those people first?
Yeah, so we're looking, first of all, in that geographic area. And the reason that we're doing that is because Central Oregon Irrigation District is investing, with the help of federal and state funding, $30 million this winter in piping part of the Pilot Butte Canal in that Terrebonne area. And so that we found that the best way to create conservation outcomes is to direct these projects to areas that are adjacent to the large piping. You're probably familiar with Three Sisters Irrigation District did that.
It's right by my house.
Yeah, so they piped main canals, and then they invested in the private laterals and on-farm efficiencies, like flood to sprinkler, to really optimize the outcomes. So that is the approach the Irrigation District wants to take, and it makes the most sense from a water supply standpoint. So the Smith Rock Kingway targeted area is really the highest priority. And the pathway for saved water is to actually make that water savings available to North Unit Irrigation District, and they can actually spill it right there, in exchange for Upper Deschutes winter flows to meet their requirements under the Habitat Conservation Plan, under ESA. So that's, you know, really a multi-benefit pathway for that water to go. And to your point, there's about 4,000 irrigated acres in the area that we're talking about. About 50% of those are actually flood irrigated, so we would target those acres. In addition, there's about 200,000 linear feet of open canal. It's a private lateral system that's very complex. And really piping those private laterals and hooking those farmers up to the pressurized water really creates a lot of water savings opportunity and makes operations much more efficient for the Irrigation District. Yes.
I also think that when we help private landowners and farmers with their irrigation rates to hook up to these pressurized water systems, over time, as they prove that they need less water, they're able to possibly donate that water to North Unit as well.
Absolutely. So we're really reducing demands by creating a closed-loop system that will, you know, back up all the way to the pipe.
From what I've heard in North Unit, because the pressure is so low, that it will run drip systems for like carrots. But for other, you know, farmers, they, you know, the capacity isn't there, the pressure isn't there, and it really doesn't run the sprinkler system. So it's really, you know, driving through it yesterday, you really saw a lot of land that's not in production. And those are people that sell garlic by the semis. So, yeah, it's, it's really a horrible situation.
Yeah, they are, they do not have enough water this year, and it's severely impacting them, yeah. So this, this is going to help that. And again, the outcomes would be improved efficiency, reduced water demand, up to 40% overall water savings in the areas that we're working, drought resilience, and restored stream flows. So that would be that Smith Rock Kingway project area where 80% of our funding would go. And I should also mention that we recently received a grant from the NRCS, Natural Resources Conservation Service, of 2.6 million to implement these projects. And so this, this matches, this match would come in at a critical time to leverage that 2.6 million in that area. So the next approach is the countywide investment, and I'll have Erin speak.
Yeah, so we have that RCPP, Regional Conservation Partnership Program with NRCS for that Smith Rock Kingway boundary line. And I think this is a great opportunity, this ARPA funding, it's a great opportunity to not have a boundary restriction and really work countywide and help other irrigation districts that have more junior water rates. For example, Kate said Arnold Irrigation District is shutting off, so be able to help patrons make their systems more efficient, so that if this continues, if this trend continues, this drought, the shutting down of water earlier, if we're able to help these landowners make their systems more efficient, they can hopefully have water for longer periods of time throughout the summer for their crops. For example, our district has been working down in Arnold Irrigation District for this one, and we're calling it the Tower Ditch. It's called the Lundie Ditch, or the Lundie Ditch, I'm sorry. It's called the Lundie Ditch. And we, my coworker Todd has been working with all the patrons. And this is a feasibility study, but that's one example of, the design is ready. The landowners are, landowners are on board. It would just be the funding to put this pipe in the ground to help. I think it's about 10 landowners in Arnold Irrigation District to make their systems more efficient. And then also for the flood to sprinkler, that is all in COID, and it is not restricted to that project boundary. So also utilizing countywide funding to work with landowners to do flood to sprinkler conversions outside of that project boundary would be really beneficial within COID.
Yeah, so the countywide investment piece of it, we've estimated 10 projects a year, and that would include 10 in this actual year. So we would see those on the ground for the next irrigation season. So a total of up to 20 projects over a two-year time period. And the structure of this, this part of the investment would be making available $15,000 per landowner and asking for a 50% cost share. One of the biggest benefits we think landowners will see is that the, the other funds available to them through NRCS, through the EQIP programs, again, are funneled to certain geographies. And if you've ever used those programs, the bureaucracy and the red tape is overwhelming. And so a lot of landowners don't want to use those programs. And so having a pot of funding that would be less restrictive from that standpoint would be, we think would really accelerate those projects.
Can, can I ask, so COID is, has a new revolving loan fund in the mix here as well. So can you talk about how those things would interact? So I mean, if you're offering these ARPA funds as, you know, on a 50-50 cost share, could some of these farmers also tap into a low-interest loan from COID to cover part of the, the, the match for, you know, the, for the proposed project? And because, you know, my, my big concern is that the, the farmers who are willing to do, to, to do these on-farm projects, they, they really actually don't have a whole lot of meaningful incentives. I mean, it doesn't, water is cheap, so, you know, like, water is cheap. And, you know, if they're in a senior rights area, they're, the water is largely guaranteed to them. So they, their motivation to, to implement on-farm efficiencies, you know, they don't have drivers that are pushing them to do this. So they're mostly doing it to be good, you know, good citizens of the watershed. So making it, you know, providing some grant funds, providing some loan funds, you know, and making it easy for them. And, and not a, you know, not a huge outlay out of their pocket, you know, on, on year one, their first cost. It's, that's, I'm very excited about that.
Yeah, absolutely. COID has a loan program they're instituting that's 200,000 a year. So if you theoretically can package, you know, 10 projects with this money, that could be matched with that money. And you could have 10 landowners being able to do that work without throwing out their own cash.
And I think on top of that too, is with this ARPA funding comes technical assistance from our staff. So that's providing support and knowledge and education on, it does increase, enhancing their irrigation systems does provide benefits to the landowner. It's less labor, less workers possibly, less time out in the fields, rotating their wheel lines, for example, when you just have a sprinkler system. So there are a lot of benefits to the landowner, and that can come along with this ARPA funding as well.
Okay, so there are some motivations. But, but yeah, I mean, that first cost is a, is a real, it's a, it's a real barrier.
Especially when a lot of, a lot of these farmers down here are not actually the ones that aren't making a livelihood and have jobs in town, they tend not to have the money to invest, or, you know, so it makes sense. This is a repeat of the slide. I'm not going to read it again, but we just think there's a lot of benefits with this, this program. And specifically, I'll have Erin talk a little bit more about beyond the water conservation, just like the economic pandemic relief to farmers.
Yeah, so we've been looking at the qualifications for this ARPA program. And a big thing is how does this relate to the pandemic and recovery from the pandemic? And landowners and producers, farmers, ranchers, not saying all of them, some of them or most of them, I don't know the exact numbers, have definitely fell in economic downturn with COVID. Rising cost of living in Deschutes County keeps, trying to find workers is a big hurdle that these farmers and ranchers are trying to overcome. So I think it definitely relates to pandemic relief, making their systems more efficient. A lot of these landowners too, they rely heavily on agritourism. So when COVID happened, they could not rely on that. They could not have their pumpkin patches open. They could not have weddings. A lot of these farms that have 100 cattle, they rely on 20% of their profit coming from agritourism. So that was a big hit for them as well. So I think this project can provide economic support to local farmers, ranchers, producers, landowners through making their systems more efficient. And like I said earlier, having less people on land, or maybe if you have a more efficient system, you don't need three farmhands, maybe you just need two people out in your field. So it'll decrease operating costs for the amount of workers. It'll help increase profits. More efficient irrigation, irrigation systems will allow for a longer irrigation season if the water's shut off earlier, or if your flows are limited, or if you're with the drought, if you're on a rotational system. So if you're getting less water, but you have a more efficient system, it'll allow your water to last longer throughout the season. And like Kate described, working with NRCS is a great opportunity. It's a lot of paperwork. It definitely, I would say, some people aren't fully supportive of using that program. So this is a great opportunity to really just work one-on-one with the landowner and get projects implemented in a quick turnaround process.
And I know Greg and Dan are very interested. What is the specific ARPA eligibility under the rules? And so this would fall under Section 5.8, Clean Water, Water Conservation. And specifically, they call out installs water-efficient irrigation equipment for water conservation and agriculture, role of best management practices. So we would see both water conservation, water quantity savings, as well as water quality benefits of reduced overland flow and seepage into the groundwater. Last, sorry, that's so small, but it's in your, it's in your printout as well as the proposed budget, which I actually have the wrong glasses on, and can't, I'll read it from here. So yeah, we're, we're proposing 1.45 million total in ARPA funds, and we would have, I got it, I got it there, thanks. Getting old when you have, you have different glasses. This is new to me. Yeah, a million dollars would be, would funnel into the actual project implementation in the Smith Rock Kingway area that would be matched for that 2.6 million of NRCS investment. And then countywide investment, the specific materials for those projects would be 300,000 over two years. And personnel, because it does take time to reach those landowners, provide the technical assistance, manage the projects. We're asking 150,000, which is only 10% of the total. That would be split between the Soil and Water Conservation District and the DRC. COID's personnel is donating their time in kind, and they're actually going to do a lot of the piping implementation work and the landowner outreach in that Smith Rock Kingway area. So we feel like this is well-leveraged. We have, again, 2.6 million from the NRCS. COID's low-interest loan program over two years is $400,000. And then we would provide in-kind match between our three organizations of 300,000 over those two years. So there's a lot of leverage there. We think this is a good investment for, you know, kind of a small price tag. I think when the three of us came initially with our separate proposals, it was almost $15 million of a request. We streamlined it for you, so we would just really-
10%, good job, right?
Yep. Yeah, so we would really appreciate consideration to fund this, and we think we could provide some real tangible outcomes in the next two years.
Thank you very much for putting that together. I mean, it does, it does hang together comprehensively. You know, that's a good example of, what was it, Section 5.8 and the, the specific line item that we would trace it back for ARPA. So that was very empowering to even see that.
So I, I had requested that we consider this proposal sooner than later, so that we can potentially make an investment and see work happening over the winter that would actually impact water supply next year, next, next irrigation season. And so with that, I would love to, you know, make sure that any questions that, that my colleagues have are answered and, and then consider this proposal for funding today.
Any thoughts, Commissioner?
Okay, so we were talking, okay, 41, 42 is the number of irrigated acres that you're, you're working on. And how many, how many farmers, ranchers are part of that project then, the target?
Yeah, I wish Baxter was here, but I think it's 200-ish.
200-ish? I know I heard from some farmers, like in the Tumalo neighborhood, that were piped, and then they were told that their water was going to be shut off like every, like every, every seven days. You know, it's shut off for the next week, you know, alternating or whatever. But, you know, I know the fact that we have so much flood in that area, it's really highly inefficient.
A lot of that floodwater will run back into the Deschutes or Crooked River too. So even more example of inefficiency.
So when we, some of these on-farm projects, so I've just seen examples of when the water is on for 24-hour period or 12-hour period, whatever it is for a property, a specific property. It's flowing flood across, and then it's filling a pond also, so there's some reservoir there. What is the, what does the improvement look like? You know, and I'm envisioning water out of the pond and a, and a pump, which we've seen, because then the ultimate would be pressurized water at the, at the edge of the corner of the property. So yeah, what, can you help me with just the specifics about what, what could be done this year? What would it look like for projects this year?
Yeah, we have, I know my coworker Todd, we talked about this to give, we have definitely three to six landowners on board, switching from flood to sprinkler currently in Central Oregon Irrigation District. So that would be, yeah, switching to sprinkler system and not flooding anymore, and then pumping out of a pond to help that system become more-
So when they have an allocation for a period of time, it's only going to a pond, it's not going to flood across a field?
Another thing that we have a vision for in that Smith Rock Kingway area, once we get things piped. So private rotations are really problematic in COID. So you have like what used to be 100-acre parcel, and now it's 25-
Okay, and that's where they come from. That helps, okay. That's a reminder.
And so people, you know, get their water for 24 hours.
Yep.
They're supposed to start taking it at 3:00 in the morning, like the schedules are kind of-
Yeah.
Right, so there's problems with, you know, coordinating amongst those landowners. So eventually, what we'd like to do, what COID would like to do is pipe that private lateral and then deliver pressurized water on a 24/7 basis to landowners. So they're not on a rotation anymore, and they can turn on and turn off when they want.
Well, yeah, so two bits of information you just shared with me. So that was, parcelization at some point is how you get these private rotations. So they say, and now I understand that- that because I've seen it, I didn't understand the history of that. And the fact that pressurized, when pressurized, it'll be available at all times. So those are both very enticing for people.
When they turn on and turn off, like Three Sisters is more this way. They turn off to hay, then that water actually shows up in the river because they just don't need to take it anymore.
Yep.
That's the that's the vision.
One of the things I read in the in the write-up was that the main canal piping in this Smith Rock Kingsway project will result in 30 CFS of savings and that the private lateral and on-farm efficiency work could could result in equally or as much savings. Can you convert for me? I want to make sure I'm doing this right. Can you confer for me 30 CFS is how many acre feet of?
Let's see. 30 CFS is probably 20,000 acre feet.
Sorry?
20,000 acre feet?
20,000.
I would need a calculator.
That's great.
I have a calculator, but yeah.
I mean, you know, as we're as we're hearing about, you know, farmers in North Unit or Arnold who are, you know, being curtailed, I mean, just imagining what 20,000 acre feet could do is is really exciting.
Okay, I just do have a question. Okay, so you're allocating a million for the materials for a Smith Rock Kingway. Now, remind me again, where are the other 300,000 allocated to then? Did you say like to help Arnold or something? Is that what?
Yeah, so I had kind of a bad map and I drew a square that, oh, we don't need it. But yes, there's other irrigation districts in Deschutes County. So other parts of COID that don't fall in the Terrebonne area, Arnold Irrigation District, Tumalo Irrigation District, Swale Irrigation District. Am I missing anybody? Yeah, Three Sisters could be eligible, but they're pretty much.
Aren't they pretty, weren't they ahead of the game?
Pretty much.
Yeah, very much.
They're all ahead of the game. So yeah, mostly those four irrigation districts is where the water. And Tumalo Irrigation District is aggressively piping their canals right now. And so that's another great opportunity to link up to the piping in Tumalo. And I know that.
Yeah, we've worked with a couple landowners there. So as that pipe went in in Tumalo, the landowners were kind of left to their own accord to attach to that pipe. And a lot of them did that, the ones that we have talked to. And they're they wanted to wait until next irrigation season to see how everything worked this season. So we'll be in touch with them again.
Okay. Thank you.
So one CFS for 24 hours is close to two acre feet, 1.98. So 30 adds up fast over, you know, three month or irrigation system season or whatever it is.
Yeah, 20,000 acre feet. That's a lot of that's a lot of water. And another thing that I think is really exciting about this this work is that I it's not that it's not that private lateral piping and on-farm work is not is, you know, is non-existent in the basin, but we're still very early in implementing this work. And as you've heard, with with all of the main canal piping happening in the other irrigation districts, there's just tremendous opportunity to replicate this work after it's been, you know, after after, I mean, this isn't, you know, there's been enough of this work that you couldn't call this a pilot. But I mean, in a lot of ways, it it just kind of helps to build the momentum of these types of projects happening.
So thank you very much for the presentation. I know you're advocating to spend money today and I'm supportive of that. So let's work on getting there if there's other discussion items.
Greg, do we need a motion?
Yeah, however we.
Yes.
Motion usually is what we need.
Okay. So I move that we support the Deschutes County On-Farm Efficiency Water Conservation Project in the amount of 1.45 million dollars from American Rescue Plan funds.
And I'll second, but I wanted to know, when do we, would we hear a report from you, like in six months or something, so we know exactly what's happening? Would that be too soon? Like a December 31 report or something, so we know?
Or how about right before irrigation system season starts?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just, I think feedback is really important.
Yeah.
About eight from eight months from now or so? Here we go.
During 2022. Thanks.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Congratulations. Thank you very much for dialing it dialing it in and working with your partners on this, too. This is exciting.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
To get 55% of those who are flood irrigated lands, acres, so that's really good to get 55, you know, of that total number out of flood, you know, is significant. Because I was wondering how we can, you know, I don't know how many farmers that is, but at least it's making a good push.
Yeah, absolutely. We appreciate it. The farmers, the fish, the frogs, all appreciate it. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
I think my family flood irrigated like decades and decades ago because I had to move sprinkler pipe. They, yeah, I know, it's not funny how things change. I mean, it was like in the 60s when they were flood irrigating.
We're all learning to do more with less, which is good.
Okay, next item, Commissioners, is this was not a specific ask that came up at the last meeting, but has been a topic of interest is our homelessness and unhoused situation in the county. And so what we decided to do, and it's also a big ask that's part of your eligible list that we'll look at again, you've seen and we'll look at it again. But in as a result of that, we've asked Colleen Thomas, who's the county's expert on homelessness, and we had a chance to meet one-on-one with each of you. She's going to come and talk about the ask for the Cleveland Avenue project, which is on your list, and give you a short presentation on that.
There you go. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. For the record, I'm Colleen Thomas, Homeless Services Coordinator for Deschutes County. And before I kind of jump into Cleveland Commons, I just wanted to thank you all for the listening to public comment this morning in regards to China Hat. I know that that was a lot of information and it's a really intense topic. And so I appreciate you taking that opportunity to hear that and for those that provided public comment this morning. Yep. I know that I had a chance to meet with each of you in regards to Cleveland Commons. So I'm here to answer any questions, but I know for the public section of this as well, just to do a brief overview in regards to the proposed project of Cleveland Commons. So this is an ask for a joint ask from Neighbor Impact, which is our community action agency, along with Housing Works, which is our community's housing authority. The ask is for the capital funding for the Cleveland Commons project, which will be a permanent supportive housing complex to serve with that will be providing 36 units of permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is for chronically homeless individuals in our community. It's a housing-first model. So it will be serving those really high-risk and high utilizers in our community. The project that they have brought forward, I think that you have in your packet, a lot of the information and the structure of what the proposed project is. But the land has already been identified, the project development has already been identified. Right now, what the ask is, is for capital funding to develop that project.
So this is Housing Works and Neighbor Impact and the FUSE. So FUSE is?
Frequent users of systems engagement.
And this is permanent supportive housing. So long-term permanent supportive housing for people in our community that are probably not going to be more independent. There's no path to independence anymore. So there could be other reason, any kind of reason?
Correct, yes. So permanent supportive housing, again, is to serve those really high vulnerable, high utilizers. So that are high costs to our community for law enforcement contacts, our healthcare system, and folks that, you know, might have severe persistent mental illness as well. The chronic homeless definition from HUD is very complex, as is the whole homeless issue. And so it's really serving those that have been experiencing homelessness in our community for quite a while. The goal in providing services in this project would be hopefully that those whoever is identified to provide the onsite services is going to work with those individuals to provide to provide intense case management to hopefully gain some sustainability for whatever next for that individual may be, which might be independent housing. But that is not maybe the case for all individuals.
Colleen, I did have a couple of questions about, you know, other facilities that might serve similar needs. Just to set, get a sense of the scale, you know, I want to get a sense of the scale of the demand or need for this kind of these kind of housing units, but also, you know, how much of that is being met or could be met in other ways. So my first question was, are there facilities who serve the same population already within within the community? I believe that Nancy's house is serving a similar need, but, you know, it kind of will be, you know, dramatically expanded on this same site by this project. But are there others?
We currently do not have a permanent supportive housing program in our community serving this exact population. There are subsets of the population that shepherds have, like emergency shelter, but not, we do not have permanent supportive housing in our community.
And so the other question was, we're we've been discussing, exploring with with Housing Works' use of the of the property on 27th and Connors for, you know, to essentially make the, you know, make it possible for them to dramatically expand an affordable housing project that they already have in the works. And one of the one of the potential uses of that land that they've mentioned was for permanent supportive housing, some units of permanent supportive housing. And is that, would that be serving the the same population? Or, you know, are these going to be similar types of facilities? So that's the first question. And then if so, like I'm wondering, are, you know, A, what the overall need is? And then B, is there is there a priority in terms of kind of shovel, you know, architecture completed, shovel readiness, you know, kind of that kind of thing for one or the other of those projects?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so I can't speak necessarily to the plans that Housing Works has in place for Connors, too. I know that that is a population that they want to focus on for permanent supportive housing with Connors, too, I believe is the the location you were mentioning. But I think that they wanted to be able to have a specific program like this Cleveland Commons to really be able to be the kind of the footstep into permanent supportive housing, a really specific designated location that's going to serve only that population in that area so they can gain expertise before moving into providing additional services for that. So I know that this is a priority within the community to provide permanent supportive housing and Housing Works and Neighbor Impact and other agencies that have been involved in this want to make sure that this is as successful as possible and because there's a need for it. And so looking at other opportunities to provide that. And Connors, too, I think fell into that category because there is forward progress on that.
Thank you.
So.
And can you, can you give us any sense of like the scale of the need in the community?
Yeah, so from our point in time count numbers, which is an annual survey that the Homeless Leadership Coalition, our continuum of care for the region, is mandated to do every year. In 2020, the chronic homeless population that was surveyed was almost 300, 300 individuals. We know that's a severe undercount because, again, it's a voluntary survey. But from 2020 to 2021, we had a 13% increase in those experiencing homelessness across our region. And so we can, we know that there's a definite need, as was kind of showcased this morning in public comment with those living in the China Hat area. There's a need for folks to have a supportive, you know, housing location.
Thank you.
Colleen, I thought the count for the county was like in the 900 range or something. So this 300 number, is that for Bend?
Nope, that is for Altria County. And that was in 2020.
So that's all you counted. But the other day when we were talking, we actually believe that there's 1,500 homeless in Deschutes County.
Right. In 2020, the overall count for those experiencing homelessness was 900 and almost 1,000.
Almost 1,000. That's what I remember.
And of those individuals, 300 met the chronic homeless definition.
Okay.
This year, for the point in time count, we had counted an overall of just over 1,000 individuals. And I don't necessarily have the chronic homeless definition call out for this year as we're still looking at the data.
Okay, all right. And I believe you said the other day that this project has 18 studios designed and then 18 one-bedrooms, which could possibly have two people. But then again, if you're talking about people that have severe mental illness, is that really a possibility that people will be able to share an apartment?
Most likely, so again, it'll depend on who is the operator of this of this facility. But most likely, those one-bedroom units would be a couple. It wouldn't be two individuals that weren't unfamiliar with each other that were living there unless that's how they identified their household, moving into the apartment.
Okay, because that would be like a maximum of 54 people at the most.
Right, correct.
Who are possible operators?
So so when we look, when we talk about permanent supportive housing and complexes like this, we have really looking how to make this successful. We have an owner and developer, which might be Neighbor Impact and Housing Works. And then we have an operator, which really is the onsite 24/7 staffing. And with this case, it might, that might be a subcontract with Epic Property Management. I don't know where all those discussions are. But I don't, I, the ask for Deschutes County is not to be the operator of this, but potentially to be the service provider.
So, yeah, is this a ready ask today? I mean, so my vision was that we would have maybe a little bit of Neighbor Impact Housing Works engagement here today. What does that look like from your point of view?
Yeah, I think that both Neighbor Impact and Housing Works are willing to have more discussion in regards to this proposal. I know that David Brandt, the executive director of Housing Works, was on vacation for today, but has offered to be able to present to you all and ask, answer any questions you might have for that. I know that the project, as I said, has gone through, and I believe I mentioned, we went through a technical assistance training last fall. And so all the facility layout and everything is in place. They said if they were able to receive the capital funding for this, they might be able to start construction as early as the end of this year, beginning of next year, 2022. But that, with that being said, I think if you have additional questions for Neighbor Impact or Housing Works, that they'd be willing to answer those questions.
Yeah, so thoughts about, you know, each unit is going to be occupied by someone. What are the different ways that that unit can be paid for? Or, you know, is it a housing voucher or a permanent social security Medicaid benefit? Or, you know, just how, what are the different avenues of people to qualify and have that unit paid for? And the revenue flow annually, as in, you know, who would be the operator? What's the overhead to keep it going and keep the doors open? And who are the partners paying for that? Building it may be the easy part, long-term.
So would David be available on August 16th to come back on that day?
It's hot today.
What?
When the room was full, we needed the mics up loud and now they're real hot.
Dan Emerson, Budget Manager, Deschutes County. I spoke with Mr. Brandt. I had assumed that we would have a tentative meeting on 8/25 because I know you're out 18. And he said he would be available for that.
Okay.
And maybe we could get a representative for Neighborhood Impact as well.
Great.
Connecting back with the 27th and the Connor's property, Housing Works has suggested that they might be willing to pay us a million dollars for that property. You know, and so if we decide we do want to make that transaction, that million dollars could be, I, in my mind, that million dollars could be in the mix for supporting this project as well. Because we have, we've made land contributions, just straight-up contributions for lots of other important affordable housing projects around the around the county. And in this case, we had an entity who was willing to come forward and pay for the property. But this is an entity that's doing a lot of really important things for our community and including this project. So it, to keep that that money recycling in, you know, doing good things seems like a logical connection for me, which would then, you know, conserve on our ARPA dollars for the many, many other needs that that we're becoming aware of in our community.
Okay, well, so I think that's far as we're going to go with that today. It is on the list. It's been acknowledged. It's a great idea. Permanent supportive housing is going to be a valuable asset in our community. Yeah.
I mean, so it would be great to bring, you know, bring this back August 16th, but I'd love, Colleen. I'd love, Colleen, for you to just kind of give us a sense of urgency, you know, like what, what, what is, what makes this project urgent to consider or to, to, to support now as opposed to six months or 12 months from now?
Do you want me to answer that now?
Please.
So, you know, I think as, again, not to refer back to the conversation in public comment this morning, but we are seeing a, a very sharp increase in those experiencing homelessness in our region, especially with eviction moratorium. I know there was some news yesterday about that, but we are going to see the impacts of what COVID-19 has done on our community for those experiencing homelessness and for those that have been experiencing homelessness in our community for a long time. And this, with this, more that we put off a project like permanent supportive housing, the more we're going to see a long-term chronic homeless number increase in our community. And so there's going to, the need is going to continue to grow. And I think that it, you know, being able to take action now to say that we are invested in providing this vital need for those that are most vulnerable in our community puts us in a step in the right direction of really being able to impact the overall population of those throughout Deschutes County. And so, you know, we go, before we know it, we'll be heading into winter season, and luckily we have had some forward progress on providing warming shelters, but that still leaves a vast number of individuals on our public lands and throughout our community. And as, you know, other public agencies make decisions on closures of encampments due to unsafety or safety concerns and fire safety included in that, that we are going to see more and more folks pushed out into our, on our public lands. And so the increase of, you know, isolating individuals and not having access to the resources to help them hopefully move out of homelessness, I think is, you know, is really important at this point. We're going to only continue to see the impacts on our community for those experiencing homelessness.
Thank you, and thanks for, yeah, making the connection back to the public testimony we heard this morning. I mean, it is, you know, as I was listening, you know, it, it, the people were telling stories about there being many different populations of homeless people out there. And the, the idea that, you know, some of the people who might be scariest to neighbors might have a, you know, a, a good place to go with the wraparound services they need to be, to stabilize them, could be served by a project like this is, is very compelling.
And I will say too, you know, as we talk about COVID-19 and this, this model of FUSE, so frequent users of systems engagement, that's the target population for this project, of, you know, we look at COVID-19 numbers and those being hospitalized because of this virus, that, that is putting a strain on our hospital system. And so if we can divert individuals that are accessing the hospital system by providing them a safe place with intensive services, that hopefully will alleviate some of the costs and strains on our hospital system as well.
It'd be great to, it would be wonderful to, you know, get the hospital, get the sheriff's office and, and other entities to consider co-investing in the operation of this facility because of the benefits that it might provide. And that is, that's very parallel to some of the other discussions we're having about the stabilization center and other places.
I was listening to the story about the warming shelter they're going to be doing in Jefferson County this morning, I was on the radio, and it sounded like, what, 25 people? And it was just a couple, like 2,200 square feet or something like that? And I'm wondering, do you really think that half of these need to be one bedrooms? I mean, are there really that many couples that will be housed here? I mean, I'm wondering if we could do a few less one bedrooms and do more studios so we could actually help more people? I mean, you've been working with this, your clients, for a long time. Do you think that half of them need to be one bedrooms?
I think it's a great opportunity to have that for a little bit more space. I do think that there is a subset of the population that are couples, but I think that that's a great potential to have that conversation with the developer of, you know, with Housing Works to say, you know, maybe instead of 50/50, we do look at what is the layout and how can we maximize the, the space of this facility? I will say with the facility and, you know, increasing the numbers, that is also going to increase the service staff, depending on, right? A lot of chronically homeless individuals in one location is going to also increase the need for experienced support services so that, you know, having that many people in a congregated area, so we'll increase staffing to have more individuals in that area. So that, I think, went into the planning of that, but I think it's a, it's definitely open for conversation on what, what makes the most sense. I don't know if it's a 50/50 for, you know, one bedroom versus studio.
Well, I was just thinking of Veterans Village. We clearly heard that 15 was really a perfect place to stop that for personalities, but this would be with a lot more managed care, I would believe, you know, 24 hour, well, that one will be too, but on a different level. So, anyway.
And the, the technical assistance that we went through last fall with Corporation of Supportive Housing out of Washington, we talked about that. And there is a tool that goes through how many individuals will you have? And it gives you kind of a layout, a breakout, what the recommendation is for service staff. And it talks about line of sight and what kind of population you have. And so there are some, you know, best practices and tools out there that have really been put to use in regards to the implementation of this project.
Thank you, Colleen.
So we're talking getting back together in two weeks, is that what you mentioned?
The 25th, so I believe three.
Three weeks, okay. Yeah, it's about three weeks, yep.
So, so the 16th for childcare, 25th for this one.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm excited about this. So I mean, just letting you know, there's, there's not resistance to it, it's just let's get a little bit more businesslike about long-term costs and management and, you know, who's operating and all that. So that's my thought.
And from the capital side, I'd just say that Mr. Brandt did send, in his proposal, two very detailed Excel spreadsheets, which I would have printed and handed out to you, but they're about 70 pages each. But they do contain all the budgetary information.
For out years and operations?
There may be some operations estimates, but it's mostly for, for the capital developer's fees, if they were to get funding with a bond for the other 4.2, that kind of information.
We'll, we'll make sure that, that the operating cost, the out-year operating cost impacts are also discussed on.
Because it'll be a long-term partnership, you know, this will be out there for a long term for a lot, and it'll do great things, but yeah, it's awkward, this, you know, magic happens here, shouldn't be part of the future equation, you know, where we don't, just don't know what's going on.
Just a question, Housing Works has, has access to the same kind of finance opportunities that we have in bonding and, and things like that? I mean, is it, I'm right about, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with all of what they have access to, but they, they would have financing opportunities as well, yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering whether, you know, some kind of partnership like this could involve us, you know, you know, providing financing, you know, capacity as well as...
I think there's certainly room for creativity.
Okay.
Thank you, Colleen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, trying to be respectful of the time of day here. We have just three more quick items we can go through. The next one is just, Dan's going to give a quick update on the response to the ARPA funding outreach we did in the community. As you remember, we had a, a press release that Whitney put out, and it had an ask for folks that had, wanted to have input in the community into this ARPA funding, and we've received several emails back, so Dan will give a quick update on that, what we've received.
So correct, yes. As Greg said, we did set up an ARPA email address. We have received some significant community feedback. One of the first proposals we got, and this actually came separate from the ARPA email address though, was what Commissioner Dares mentioned today, the Re-Village Childcare, which is a nonprofit in central Oregon. They're asking to renovate, retrofit staff and open four childcare centers. Their funding ask is for $350,000 for that. And again, it's for opening those five childcare sites, staffing and some capacity expansion and support moving forward. And then another one is what we just heard from Colleen, the construction of the Cleveland Avenue 36 unit permanent supportive housing for individuals experiencing homelessness, 4.2 million in capital. There's the separate operating costs of 2.1 million in DCHS staff potentially over three years. Another proposal that we received and I've been forwarding to you is the capital remodel to a new facility for the Giving Plate, which is a local food assistance nonprofit here. And the funding asked for that is 500,000 to 700,000 in capital remodel. And that would allow us to increase as a community our food assistance to those in need. There has been a large amount of community support via emails, I've been trying to send those as well to you. And just stop me if you have any additional questions on this. We also had a representative from a small business, I believe it was Glass Accents in Redmond, who reached out to us for more information on potential ARPA funds for COVID-19 relief. So I kind of got back to them, let them know that we're looking into a partnership with some other organizations, COIC, and, and determining eligibility for those small businesses, and we'll be getting back to her as well. She did not have a specified funding ask at this point in time. The most recent proposal we received was from The Shield. It is a nonprofit mental health provider that concentrates on veterans' care. They are requesting additional funds for specialized counseling to veterans. Their funding ask was $20,000 for that specialized counseling in their proposal. They mentioned that there was an increase in veteran suicide and I think veterans' depression and, and mental illness during the COVID pandemic. So those are kind of the structured proposals that we've received from that ARPA address. We've also received some general feedback from the community that I'd like to go through real quick. We received an email, supporting affordable housing as a high priority. We received an email supporting more work training for adults with disabilities, increased affordable housing and increased bus transportation hours to the weekends and nights so individuals with, that can't drive and without cars can get to their jobs. And then we've received a couple of emails regarding homeless and potentially making a campground with shower and bathroom facilities, water and weekly trash, trash pickup. So that's, kind of sums up most of the requests that we've received from the community at this point.
So, thanks, Dan. So those items that we've received, we'll incorporate those in the list for next time. We have a cutoff date to publish the, each agenda item, and these are items that came in after that, so they'll be included. So you've heard them once here, and we'll go over them again in the future list, so.
I just have a question. Number, the, a fourth item you had on your list, Glass Accents, is it a business, what is it?
Glass Accents.
Glass.
I believe they do like shower, shower glass and accents of, of that sort. And they heard through the Redmond Chamber of Congress about.
Okay, so they're asking as a business then?
They are as a small business.
Okay, that's what I thought you meant, and I just wanted to be sure.
So one of the things I'd like to get back to is kind of the buckets, you know, if we think of this as 19 or 38 million dollars, kind of the buckets that we were, we were thinking of doing, is to say there's big projects out there possibly like sewer system tarabon concept that we, you know, I'd like to, if we do one and 2 million and $4 million, all of a sudden we don't have that last five for some, I don't know if that's the right number, just throwing out numbers, but you know, some big number we wanted to do, and it could slip away. So trying to get back to the buckets, maybe that's a way to structure what we do here is, okay, if we, you know, even if we just break it up into thirds or quarters and, and try to at least hold on to some amount of money for, until we get to all these conversations. So as I say, septic groundwater tarabon is one, one of those paths, you know, there's maybe other ones. And then also, I'm, I'm motivated to make sure we're going down a path of, you know, kind of the, just like we heard this morning in public testimony, how are we going to get to that point where we can have our public safety say, you can't be here, because that's what we're seeing, public safety is not asking people to move, but you can be there. So in conversations, you get to the kind of the high barrier and low barrier concept. Beth Lemon is high barrier, Shepherd's House is low barrier for, you know, people coming in and looking for help. One of the other scenarios can be high barrier campground, low barrier campground. So this is one, you know, private, private industry is high barrier, is, you know, privately owned, you come in, you pay a fair value, you get your services, and we expect you not to be disruptive to the rest of the community. Low barriers, come in, will, will help you come in with your, your vehicle that may not be functioning, and we're going to provide services, and we're going to, you know, try to ramp you up and, and hopefully move you on to better, better location in your life or better position. Not, not, they don't have to leave, they, you know, just make it better for you. So, and then we talk about possibly, you know, Redmond, the parcels that are in the city, the part of the large parcel that's in the city, urban growth boundary, and then wanting to move forward with that, whatever that looks like. So I, and I'm just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page, kind of moving forward. And there's not even a specific ask, but will there be an ask at some point? You know, and this will be probably a self, you know, self-started ask at the commission level in partnership with the other city councils, and there may be multiple ones of these. Also, so when you get to that high barrier, low barrier campground concept, what about offering dollars in some amount to existing facilities, campgrounds, RV resorts, and we already went through the land use with this a little bit with Peter Gatauski, you know, maybe there's a way for us to invest in those existing facilities if they could add a spot or provide long-term, because some of these, you know, the septic system is possibly gonna fail, you know, I, I don't want to speak for any of them, but what about putting out a, you know, request for proposal for improvements in existing RV facilities? And I'm not being, I'm specifically not being real clear because I don't want to put too much direction to it until we talk about it. But then there's, you know, maybe funds that we put in a bucket and say, okay, what if? And then see what comes back. So that, that, just laying that out kind of in a generic fashion to make sure if we want to go down that path, that, you know, we could have community development, land use, help with ARPA, help with homeless issues.
Oh, and I did talk to you, Dan, earlier about the Habitat for Humanity, the Sisters Woodland Project, you know, which is what Laird Superfood is doing. I, I just want to, I want them to know, I want to know, is this for 10 or 15 units? So that was in their range, and I just want to get that clarified before we talk about that. But I think it's great that they have the opportunity to do their project within that land that was the Forest Service at one time. You know, it's, it's a wonderful project to give more affordable housing for the City of Sisters and for people that work there, actually to work there and be able to live there. What a novel thought.
Yeah, and we'll reach out to them and get a little bit more clarification on that proposal.
Thank you.
So the path I was going down, we're kind of in that same spot. Can you help me with this, Tom? So there was a couple asks about, you know, the southeast Redmond, the corner of it. We just wrote a letter to the City of Redmond, asking them to be engaged. So would, would these ARPA dollars fit that, I guess? I mean, the answer is going to be yes, I'm thinking. This will be housing, temporary housing, transitional stuff, getting people out of the woods.
Right. Transitional housing for, for homeless individuals is generally eligible under ARPA. Obviously, we need to analyze each proposal, but that...
So then for that facility, who's the operator? You know, who's going to say, welcome, park here, go here? Who's the operator? And then do we want to pay for operations or just improvements of it? As I say, I'm, I'm trying to, this is kind of creating something from nothing here, that's why it's...
Yeah, no, capital, capital construction is one thing, a long-term operation is another thing. It's definitely...
So, yeah, I'm just making sure that, yeah, we would intend on spending some money there, ARPA dollars probably. Is there, is there any resistance to that?
No.
Yeah, just dreaming.
No, I think it's really important.
So then the next, what does the next step look like for...
Well, I mean, you've already allocated money to City of Bend for that exact purpose within Bend's border. So what we're beginning to explore with, with Redmond is a similar kind of facility, so we've not yet scoped it. We're, we're not sure what it, what it looks like yet, but absolutely, operations will be a key aspect of that discussion. That's why we're going to engage potential nonprofit operators upfront. And so that, it will, it will, again, don't know exactly what it looks like, but it's, it's designed or it's intended to accomplish the same purpose that you've already allocated money to City of Bend for.
Well, and that helps, that, that's kind of, so it's kind of down the same path. So then you think of a managed camp, the terminology, one's with RVs or something that you can sleep in, and other one's less, you know, tense. So one's maybe RVs and one's tents. And I'm just, terminology, I'm trying to work on the terminology to make sure this makes sense.
You could have a mix of those things too. I mean, if I understand correctly, the Rogue Retreat in, in, in Medford has tiny shelters, RV camping and tent camping, all in, all in one location.
But, so I'm thinking, is Bend going to have that? It sounded like there's possibly smaller parcels and that RVs wouldn't be an option.
But the one thing about Medford is that I don't believe it gets to be 29 below in Medford. And I remember in the winter of 1314, we had a new record in Sisters that was 29 below, and...
I've seen negative 32.
Okay, well, okay, well, you're lapinin', I know you're even colder. So I mean, I think we have to think about this, but we have to remember our cli...
So, I mean, I think we have to think about this, but we have to remember our climate, because our summer has been so hot. Um, the idea is that winter's gonna be really cold. So, yeah, tents.
Summer might be really hot.
Yeah, well, yeah. So anyway, I just think we have to think about it.
And I was just getting to the concept, I think some of the efforts in Bend are gonna be non, you know, you're not gonna be rolling a vehicle into some of the managed camp terminologies that we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, that.
But this one could. So that's, I'm saying, it's just, one would be with RVs and tents, I'm not opposed, but one's not gonna be able to host RVs.
And, um, and that, that's one of the reasons why it's great that the City of Bend has their safe parking program up and running. Um, I mean, I don't, I don't have a sense of how many, um, sites like that there, you know, how many parking spots essentially there are, uh, in operation in, in the City of Bend, but it's, I, you know, it's, that there's some, I mean, it's in the tens, it's not in the ones. Um, and that was, you know, frankly, when, when we looked at that, uh, that list with the, the City, the Redmond City Council, that was the one I was most disappointed, you know, there was no discussion about, cause, um, there are, you know, in, in Redmond, there are a number of, uh, faith-based institutions that have already stepped up and offered space, um, if the city would just kind of enable them to have a safe parking program. Um, so, I mean, that, that addresses, it, you know, maybe not in a centralized place, but in a dispersed kind of way, you know, you know, onesies, twosies, threesies, you know, at, at a bunch of, a bunch of churches across town, you can, you know, a, a lot of RVs can, can suddenly have a, an authorized place to be, and, you know, I would assume some, some level of support through the, you know, through the, um, the staff of the church.
So, yeah, uh, you've helped me with just the fact that we already have, it'll be a parallel path with, with what we're doing in Bend, so that helps that, that. So remember, the other concept that I'm bringing here is, and, uh, I can put it on paper more, but, uh, either a pilot project or an offer to existing RV facilities, privately owned. Uh, and if it fits ARPA dollars, which I think there's justification for housing and, you know, just the cause and effect of, of COVID in our community and, and housing needs, uh, it could be 50 or 150,000 dollars for some property, or it could be a couple thousand dollars per spot if there's somebody be able to add five RV spots, and these would be market rate spots. And as I say, then you get back to the concept that it's, we're not asking for low barrier spots, we're asking for just market spots for a fair price and, and a safe location with probably power, water, and sewer. Is there support, as, as long as there's not resistance for that, I'll, I'll come back with more clarity on that, you know, we can.
Um, I, I would want to have some understanding of, of, uh, it, it's not the same as like deed restricted affordable housing, but I would.
Just impacting inventory.
Yeah, I mean, uh, if, if, if there are RV parks that need kind of, you know, essentially, you know, infrastructure upgrades or, you know, facilities upgrades, um, that can demonstrate how they will serve some of the, you know, the, the, the population of concern, um, I, I think that's very interesting. But if, you know, I, I, I would be, I, the question would, you know, the question I would ask is, like, how do we, you know, how do you make an investment, um, and guarantee it's actually having any kind of impact on the, you know, on the, the problem you're trying to solve? And not just, you know, like, oh, that RV park is in much better shape now, and now they, now, well, you know, a couple of more people can come in from out of town, um, with their, uh, you know, with their slick Winnebago and, and, you know, have, have a good time, which is, which is important and great, but, you know, you know, for that kind of, you know, um, business benefit, I, you know, I would want to see the business, you know, I would want to see businesses making investments, but, um, yeah, so how do we, how do we get the, how do we get the, the benefit that we're?
See, I don't think that's a path. So the path is, we're gonna provide a operator with some land to be able to provide services to people, to help them pull themselves up from the bootstraps, the ones that want. And then we add to the capacity in the market, uh, with dollars from the government, but it's, it's gonna add capacity, uh, in the market rate to make a profit, to be able to move forward. If you want a job, you can work at this expanded park. So to say that we want to limit this to the populations of concern means we want to hold you down to, you're the poor people, and we want other people to be the rich people that come in with their Winnebagos. So I wouldn't say anything like you just said it.
No, I, I mean, I, I just, like, I, I, I'm just asking, there, there's, there's people, there are.
I'm not proposing to do that for populations of concern, because, uh, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, if, if a neighbor, a friend, a community member is in our community and they have a housing opportunity, good for them. I don't want to call them, well, you're a person of concern because of your conditions or whatever. I mean, let's get you a better housing opportunity.
I'm just not sure if, what, what you're describing would be eligible for ARPA funding, because, I mean, if the, if the net result is more spaces, but they're just being used by more tourists, like, is that, you know, what, what ARPA purpose does that, does that address?
Then I would even go down. So that's fine, well, you know, I'm just looking for support to see if we can look into this a little bit.
I'm thinking of those people that I, they were clearly, um, you could tell they were the working poor of Bend that live in China Hat, and to be able to get those people into an RV, you know, an RV park, I think is really, um, a wonderful, you know, that's like, and that's how they said it used to be at China Hat, remember? That's what it was historically, and then all of a sudden, more and more people started coming in, and, you know, clearly, you can see the difference.
So in my vision, it would be 3, 4, 5, or 600 dollars a month, providing water, sewer, uh, and, uh, trash service, and then maybe pay for electricity. So then your total costs, if you have a, a RV, are gonna be 600, 800 dollars a month. Uh, but I don't want to categorize them as these three spots are for those people. This is just a free market thing that I'm proposing.
And I guess, I'm, what I'm struggling with is, like, how you ensure that that provides any benefit for, yeah, I, I'll say for, you know, populations of concern. And, and, I mean, if you.
That's the truth of the world, that's, I don't see that.
I'm guessing that there's ways you could structure that, but to, to, to get that benefit, but if.
Yeah, I wouldn't even go down that path, so.
Uh, again, if you, if you can't, if you can't demonstrate that, that impact and benefit, then.
Wouldn't support it.
Then I don't think that, I don't, like, the, the fundamental question is, is it even eligible for ARPA?
That's fine, I, I'll.
Cause, like, I'm, you know, outside of these ARPA dollars, I'm really investment, I, I'm really interested in seeing us expand the, the, um, the RV parks and campgrounds, um, in the community to serve tourists. And I think that that's actually something that, um, you know, would be great to spend transient room tax dollars on, for example. But, um, but, you know, without, without, you know, kind of serving, you know, populations of concern, I just don't know if there's an ARPA project there. And, you know.
Good discussion.
I mean, we could bring that back to the, to the transient room tax discussion, you know, easily.
So would you be willing to spend 150,000 dollars to upgrade a campground's septic system onsite that's not part of a city for existing land use, one way or another, wherever the dollars come from? And I'm just throwing out a number, I don't know if it's that much at all, but it's, it's more than minimal.
Um, uh, uh, again, like, the, the right color of the money, but, you know, I, 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 I would support that.
Yeah, so as I say, I'm looking, we're having a discussion about it, and I'll bring it back again in some forum and see where we can go with it. Okay.
Okay, we're almost there. So included in your packet was the updated list of eligible projects and funding decisions that you've made. That's the first few pages, I think through page six. And then the following pages was the complete list of projects, which breaks out, uh, both eligible to be determined and not eligible. That's following the theme we've had before. Uh, would you like to review those, that list again and see if there's any funding decisions you want to make, or any questions you have on any of those items that we could come back as a follow-up for a future funding decision?
Well, I'm not quite ready to do that now. Uh, I sure could, but after a long morning.
Well, one, one item that I think is, uh, time-sensitive is, is contact tracing, uh, capacity for, you know, because basically the, the, the funds that have supported contact tracing work, uh, in, in Deschutes County are running out. So, um, yeah, that, you know, ARPA being about, uh, you know, COVID response and recovery, I, I do think that that's, you know, it, it sounds like it is an eligible use, and it's, and given the, the surge in the Delta variant, um, in our community, I think it's a, it's a important, um, county public health function that we want to make sure, uh, we don't, uh, miss a beat on.
We've, we've missed a lot of beats on contact tracing. I've heard so many stories, and I've personally, um, had my own, um, situation with contact tracing where I wasn't notified, and clearly, I should have been notified. Um, heard about somebody that was called four times in one day by our contact tracers. Different people called her, and she was like, did they think I was stupid or something? I don't know, I just think it's out there, people should talk to their friends, and, um, yes. I, somebody needs to call the person that's positive, but as far as contact tracing goes, I, um, I don't, I just don't see that, um, the system has really been effectively reaching out. I've heard too many stories about too many people that were not told.
So, uh, I'm interested.
Other than the original person needs to know, they need to know, surely they do. But other than saying you're gonna do something else, and spending 40,000 a week on that seems like a lot.
I need to go communicate with contact tracing people at the Health Department and get a feel for what's going on. So I'd like to, we can bring this back at any time, I mean, that means we might pull out a specific item even, you know, next Wednesday or something and do this. Uh, so I didn't do my homework on that, so you're, you're advocating for the full amount or some amount, or?
Some amount?
I mean, because, as I say, they, they give us choices. Well, if you, if you do it for 100%, you can get out to this date and this, you know, there's just, it's like, I don't know what, uh, I, I don't know how to get grounded in that, you know, is this the right way to use these dollars? Do we have other ways to do it? If we do, if we don't invest, is it only 50% of what we would want, capacity-wise? So I got all kinds of questions around it.
Greg and Dan, I mean, well, one, one critical piece of information is, um, when do we run out of, of, uh, funds for contact tracing, uh, without, without making this?
We've done this for infectious diseases, we always do it. We're just doing it in an expanded fashion.
Yeah, and, and, are, are, you know, the, the, the people who are good at, you know, the kind of core people on county staff who are good at contact tracing are not, are, are not keeping up on other things besides COVID without, you know, without, you know, and, and who knows? I mean, like, they may very well be, um, I, I don't know this, but they, you know, if there's, if there's money that's supposed to be spent on those people for other diseases, and we're using them, you know, for, for, for COVID instead, like, but, I mean, do we have, uh?
We, we hired temporary people to.
We, we do, uh, just a suggestion here is, we have a couple of opportunities coming up pretty soon, we could bring in the Health Department and actually have them give us an overview and, there's a lot of questions here that I don't think Dan or I have, I have a couple of them, but, would that, if that would be helpful.
Okay.
We do it?
Yeah.
Next Wednesday.
It's good.
We do it next Wednesday.
Well, and I'd like to talk to somebody before that, so.
We, we could, we could do it next Wednesday as part of the COVID update.
I do, we're doing that every other week.
Oh, we are, okay.
Yes.
So this, but this is one item, I mean, if, you know, if the Health Department.
But why don't we see if we can do it on Wednesday? We can, we can try to do that.
Yeah.
As soon as possible.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
That was the one that I, I really wanted to make sure we talked about this week.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner, than the list that's, you want to bring up today?
No, I think we're, you know, I would love to be able to help the businesses more. I'm thankful for Judy Trigo stepping up, um, with her leadership, so that's good.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then just, uh, we've got our next steps, uh, lined out for us now, so we've